It's a little after nine o'clock. Commissioner Davis is running a little behind. So I think we'll go ahead and get started. I will turn it over to Mr. Scragg.
Morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
It was probably late, up late last night tabulating some.
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit into the evening and a little bit this morning. So that's why I'm cutting it as close as I am. So for those that that aren't aware or maybe watching this video now or years from now, I don't know. We went through a, an initial strategic planning conversation and leading up to that conversation, staff did a brainstorming exercise internally and we shared kind of the results of that brainstorming with you. That was a focal point of the conversation that that we had when we last met. Gave you the opportunity as commissioners to provide input as well, tallied all that up, prepared a kind of a survey instrument and really asked two categories of questions. Item by item asked you whether you agreed, it was an agreed upon goal, yes, no, or neutral. And then asked you to rate that in terms of priority from one to five, one being high priority and five being a low priority. And that allowed me to go through the information that you provided me at when you turned them in yesterday's commission meeting to then tabulate the results. So what I've distributed to you and what we have on the screen is that same document that we started from with the tabulated results. And then I have analyzed it further, so I don't intend to just take it from the top line by line. But a couple of things as it relates to just the responses. The individually, you filled out some, but not necessarily all of the categories. So you're going to see that not everything adds up to five in terms of yes, no, and neutral. I don't think anything exceeds five. If it does, that let me know, I need to fix that. And then on the average, I added a column that indicates the number of scores because felt like it was important to know if that that average was based on all five or as as low as three, I believe, in some instances. There are a couple of questions and there are topics that seem to be right after a page break that that got missed. And then others just varying by commissioner by commissioner, you responded or didn't. So as I said, it's in the original format that we took a look at it previously, divided by departments alphabetically, and then each topic's broken out there. So I just want to pause for a second, may I see if my explanation made sense? Or if you have questions about kind of the formatting, this information and how it's presented.
And I guess I'd offer maybe an apology that there were a number of items that they, you know, I supported them. They looked, they're good ideas, but more in the context of whether staff can manage to them, whether they're low hanging fruit. I chose not to give a numerical indication. That's probably what those fours are about up there.
And you weren't the only one. And speaking of staffing, there were multiple comments at the individual staff level that general support, but deferred to city management to make, make recommendations on a position by position basis. So I don't want to single any commissioner out because depending on the topic, it was more than one that just filled it out differently.
Yeah, and I know if I put a no, I didn't give it a numeric number because, man, I didn't think we needed to do it. So it didn't, it didn't weigh on me from a one to a five if I voted no. So maybe that wasn't completely, that was supposed to do it, so.
I don't know that, you know, in putting this instrument together, I don't know that I have the absolute right answers. But that is why I wanted to at least indicate how many responses we had. So if you're keying on an average score, you have a sense of what kind of responses.
And I, and I found it somewhat difficult as I looked at different departments because, you know, there may be, it depended on budget and it also depended on staffing time to do those. You know, there may have been things that I would have done that I'd do these three instead of this because staffing had time to do it or fell within the budget. So I don't know if we're going to discuss that a little bit or how that.
We certainly can. There's, you know, varying capacity levels by department and, and so I'm mindful of that as we go through and take a look at kind of the feedback of if, it may not be as high a priority, but if the department has capacity and there's general consensus, that's something that we might try to take up.
Well, and I know if I went through it, I looked at and I see Chief Weiss here. As we looked at some of the things as far as staffing, I, I didn't even answer those. I just put in their staff needs to make recommendations to us because I didn't really feel like I had the expertise to tell him where the, the staffing requirements were, so.
And then there's also feedback that focused on getting to full staffing before we add staffing. Someone had that comment as well, which is understandable, so.
Just to clarify how this is scored, second one down, continue sculpture tour. We had five yes with a score of 1.5, so that is a high priority item.
Right, and I would add to that, you had five yes, four provided scores, and the average of those four scores is 1.5.
Okay, so that is strongly supported. So we come down here to the missing features. We've got a score of 3.4, so we're not, that's not real high on the list.
Right, and so where I was going to head next is I've, I've done some of that sort of that numeric sorting to number one, identify the, the categories that had support from all five of you and then further break it out by kind of that, that ranking score. And I think you'll see there's some, some obvious consensus. I think some things bubbled to the top for sure, things that we've been talking about for a while. And then there, I have a category that I think I called reservations where it's kind of on the other end of the spectrum. It seemed to be not necessarily unanimously no, but there seemed to be division and we might want to talk about that. And then, so I've, I've broken it out into consensus, reservations, a second tier of consensus, a third tier of consensus. And then I went through and highlighted a number of topics that I think we would benefit talking about just topic by topic, given kind of the rest of the story maybe, or kind of what I'm seeing in terms of the responses being divided, that type of thing. Where it'd be helpful to have more clarity. My intention then is after this conversation, I think I can draft a document that kind of summarizes the process we went through, summarizes what we've identified as, as priorities based on this initial analysis, the conversation we have today, and give that back to you as a document to be ratified as, as our strategic planning goals going forward. So I'll pause one more time, see if that makes sense or if you have questions. Okay, the only printed document I gave you is this, this tabulation, this master tabulation, but I'll walk you through the next categories. I broke out utilities because there seems to be universal consensus across all of the utilities categories with just a couple of items for, that might merit some discussion. So as you can see, I think there, like I said, there's fives and fours in terms of, of agreement and, and varying priority ratings, but utilities kind of has a plan in place. They have a number of projects underway, they have a lot of maintenance scheduling already in place. So the things that jumped out at me that might merit some additional conversation was just, and I, and I'm not looking to single out individual commissioners, I just want to offer up these topics to get some confirmations. But the water tower painting is a budgeted item and there was one person that was neutral about that. That's something that we in the normal course of things would just continue to do as, as they need maintenance and as they start to show their age unless there's any.
That is budgeted.
Yeah, it is something that we factor into the budget and account for. So I didn't know if there's any need for discussion on that item. And then system extensions to facilitate growth. Actually, I intended to highlight the River Run Overlook Estates as well. There was some feedback in, in opposition to that. And I think the one point that I want to be sure to make is in 2004, we entered into an agreement where we obligated the city to make that extension. We actually had a timeline that was imposed in that agreement that has, has lapsed. The development didn't proceed as fast as it intended either, but so that's not entirely a discretionary item on our part based on, on that prior agreement.
Yeah, that's kind of confused me when I saw some things that were budgeted to me. I'm not, those would have been items I'm not even sure would needed to be on the list because we've already, you know, as a commission said, we're going to do that.
And understandable, I was trying to kind of give you some context to, to give you a sense of what's already on our plate, both in terms of capacity, budget, and, and what's on, on our horizon. But yeah, some of these things, you know, if they're budgeted, you could certainly indicate you don't want to proceed with them. But certain things we have an obligation to, to carry forward. And then the system extension is to facilitate growth for homes in Magnolia. Again, there is, was one neutral on that. I think the broader question is just our receptivity to spending funds for, to facilitate growth to extend the system in a proactive way rather than put that on development. But in homes in Magnolia, those type of improvements were four. So what I'm taking away from that is a receptivity to, if funds are available proactively, make those type of invest, system investments.
When you comment Magnolia, what are, are you including East Magnolia in that?
I think that's on the high priority tab on, on one of the next ones. It, right, it's appears to have risen to the top. And this is, this is focused on water and sewer, but the street item is, is coming up. So I don't think there's anything else highlighted, Jacob, you might, I'll take that back. Manhole rehab, there was one neutral in there, but then again, that's a budgeted, just kind of an ongoing maintenance item. And if we treat it as deferred maintenance, it'll catch up to us and fall behind. So those were my takeaways from utilities. There seemed to be a broad consensus about what utilities is, is doing. And I didn't pick up any feedback about, and obviously you've got the raise grant, the river project, groundwater contamination, wastewater treatment plant project, things are underway. But I didn't take, have any other takeaways from you by way of comments on what you returned or prior conversations about initiatives or concerns in the utilities department.
Is the manhole rehab kind of labor intensive for our staff?
I think we kind of cracked that out. And it's a, it's a plastic interior lining repair process and we contracted out.
Sort of expensive, I thought it was a little aggressive, but if you were going to alter that, maybe change the definition of the, or depth, of the depth, the difference before you actually fix the manhole?
Oh, yeah, this, I'm, I'm sorry, this is actually interior lining of the manholes. So like a brick manhole or the sewer gases eat into the concrete and deteriorate the manhole. So it's a process to, to kind of like you would slip line a sewer, you can put an interior lining on it.
I misunderstood, thank you.
Yes. So I think that's it with respect to utilities unless you have discussion points you want to.
Yeah, I guess, oh, the homes in Magnolia here, I had a neutral on that. And I guess I'm a little concerned, we got a lot of dirt, dirt moving right now of overbuilding. I'd kind of like to see things settle and fill up a little bit before we take on a whole new area.
This is where I transitioned to my facilitator role. That's a discussion point for, for you as a governing body. And I, I don't know, other than, than overlook estates, the two items above that are things that the timeline is going to be forced. With the overlook estates, we're going to have to respond to that development. The 12th and 13th Street Taylor Park is, is underway and will be before you. Other things like homes in Magnolia are more discretionary items that we would have to initiate. And I guess the other factor there is it, you could do just water and sewer, but it brings with it street as well, so.
And on the Magnolia Hills, it depends on, you know, if you're talking from Crawford to Magnolia or whatever you're talking about, but the Magnolia Hills addition up there that's done several phases, we have it so once you get past the halfway part, we have to do homes, correct? And I think we're about there on the Magnolia Hills, is that correct?
Well, oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was thinking halfway north to south. Yes, there is a breakpoint, east and west, but when you say we have to do it, it.
Well, I mean, we, we're, to do the next six area, we have to address Homes Road.
Yeah, there's a provision for creating a special assessment district and, and so we, there's a method in place for the developer to pay their proportionate share. If, if we did special assessments, we would carry the remainder of that benefit district until the other properties benefited and were subject to the special assessment.
That road has to be brought up to at least minimum road standard, is that correct?
It would have to meet the interim road standards for a perimeter street.
Kind of like Berkeley is now.
Right.
So, yeah, and I mean, I think our, what you're talking about is our perimeter road standard. It's a requirement that if they, once they pass kind of the midway mark, and actually they'll be filling in some of this before they get to that point, they have to have a plan for how they will upgrade that road. I, I think part of this conversation is about, do we want to be proactive about funding those things before the development district, you know, reaches all the way across? I mean, they, they are required to have a plan for how they're going to, they're, how they're going to pave that road once they get to that point, which is why, you know, they're filling in as much as they can here before they hit that, that requirement.
Did we apply for some federal funds to help with that?
We did, it, it was one of the three that we submitted as part of the base and spark process, but it wasn't funded. The, the one, one of the remaining items that we submitted is the Mag, the West Magnolia, which we've tried to transition to KDOT and see if we can secure some funding there, but.
And we've submitted that once and got turned down and we've submitted again just recently. So I, and we're hopeful with the feedback that we got that, that that'll be something that they may fund, at least the first portion of that. Homes Road, the problem with Homes Road is, is there's not really a funding source out there that, because it's not, it's not a, you can't call it economic development, there's no commercial, there's no industrial, there's nothing on it that, that they, that the feds or the state considers as economic development. And they don't necessarily fund streets just for residential development. So we haven't found a pool of money that would allow us to, to kind of tap into for that project. So the focus has been West Magnolia at this point. And then, and West Magnolia is, it's a 10 or 12, 15 million dollar project, depending on how you build it out. So trying to get that done is, it's a big project. And I think we're, I think we'll be able to do it over time and get some KDOT funds, but it certainly, we're going to have to use some local funds as well.
And it, it has a airport, industrial area, K-State, and it helps it be a little bit more competitive as well, so.
And if we address, since I don't remember if I'm remembering this correctly, we were just going to go a portion of that beyond the development, right, where kind of that box.
Yeah. So what we submitted, what we submitted originally for the base grant would have done the entire three mile stretch from Magnolia all the way up to Country Club. But once we got turned down for that, we've, we've looked at it, kind of changed a little bit with base and, and we did submit for just, I think it was a half a mile north from Magnolia. But that, that also turned away, so.
Was it north or was it north and south?
Yeah, so we, yeah, we were planning to do a half mile north and then do a half mile south at Crawford as well. But those, those didn't get any traction and I don't, I don't anticipate they will. I mean, I just don't, it doesn't seem like there's, there's much available in the way of grant funding for that type of a project. So we're back to the special assessment district whenever this develops or, you know, general tax dollars if we decide that's a priority for us to move forward.
Now, was the discussion to do this ahead of the development?
Yeah, the premise of, of the item in the, in the strategic planning list would be if, if we initiated it. You know, our, our typical practice is, has been special assessments, it has been development driven or for able to get some type of funding and then we put in a local match. But we, it would be somewhat of a policy change to make that investment.
Would that be with the intention of getting money back once the developer crosses its threshold? Because my experience has been, you know, we're not going to get that money back and.
Yeah, I, I think for the sake of this conversation, it ought to be as if we're not intending to get that money back. Special assessments is, is an opportunity to do that. There are the impact fees, but it gets, from bond council's perspective, gets a little questionable about our ability to do that.
Because if I was going to take money out of our general tax, like there's two places where I think I would want to take money and pay would be the, the bridge on Magnolia across the river and West Magnolia. Obviously that one we're hoping to get much bigger sources of money for, but if I had to take that same money and put it on any two other street projects.
But as we move to the kind of the consensus items, I think you'll see those two in your collective top 10, the, the two segments of Magnolia. So I don't know, from staff's perspective, I don't know that we have a project as relates to homes in particular, you know, teed up and ready to bring to you unless you tell us that we should. What I'm seeing out of the consensus on the other items is, it looks like you are going to want us to pursue some segments of Magnolia.
Yeah, when the decision point comes to build that half mile, how long will that take? Is there a lot of engineering or anything involved in there? Will that, I mean, I'm thinking once they break ground in the area that is going to be serviced by homes, that's the point that you start thinking about building the road and, and the road will go in a lot faster than the homes, is that correct?
The, the, oh, I'm, you said the homes, I thought you said homes, I'm sorry, yes. It would have to be, the, the process that we have, the developer is going to have to have a design for a perimeter road reviewed and approved by us as part of their development, as part of their timeline. So it will take a bit of designing. The perimeter road's a little easier to design when, when you're trying to deal with the greater ditches and, and expand it to full road standards, it gets more challenging, but.
And we do have, I mean, we did approve preliminary design for that. So we do have, and I'm not exactly sure where they're at, they should be close to done with preliminary design on, on a portion of that road. So I don't think, the design isn't what's going to hold it up. I mean, it's really the, the funding. And, and just, so this development, I mean, we've already approved special assessments to, to creep across that halfway point. And, and at that point, they just had to have a plan for what they would do. So, so the entire area is already in a, in a planned district in the future to fund that. The, the problem becomes, you know, once they creep across there, that makes those special assessments on those homes pretty high and, and whether they'll be able to absorb that in the market is, is a question that they'll have to answer at some point.
And it, and it'll be a district that extends beyond their property as well. The benefit area will be everything that adjoins homes. And so we'll have to get it formed and then we'll, we'll front those funds until the special assessments come back. Okay, you're ready, I, I'm ready to move to the next tab, Jacob. So the consensus items that seem to have obvious consensus and then sort it, further sorted by the priority. The consensus of all yeses and high priority were budget stability, the station floor relocation, proceeding with the pickleball courts donor project and widening and improving West Magnolia. And I would, I would say, I would acknowledge that, and I've stratified them here a little bit, just kind of in numeric order, but I don't know that there's any defined science between a one and a 1.2. They're, they're all kind of a high priority there. So following right behind that is widening east, the East Magnolia Bridge and roadway, completing the Bill Burke and, and Berkeley Family Recreation Improvement Project. And then in the next category is maintaining competitive wages, replacement schedules. And, and replacement schedules show up in a number of different locations. That, that categorization was kind of overarching. Economic development incentive policies, disaster recovery on the CT side and again, equipment replacement schedules. I didn't count up whether that's 10, but as I looked at all of it, that kind of seemed to be a logical breakpoint of what appeared to be obvious consensus and high priorities for you as a commission. That comport with your thinking and expectations? Okay.
So you're Santa here?
Yeah, that, that to me felt like a, a set of priorities that we could focus on for implementation. Some of the other items continued to, and we'll go through them, but some of the other items were a little bit lower in priority and it may have been continuation of existing programs, but not to say that we wouldn't pursue them, but I would, I would propose that that group there is a focal point for implementation.
That was pretty much the unanimous high score.
Yeah, there's, there's more unanimous yeses, there's quite a few more unanimous yeses, but then the scoring starts to divide a little bit.
Is bathroom renovation plan, is that?
I'm sorry?
Is that the parks or just downtown?
Um, that's the, the approach that we've implemented, where we're trying to work our way through all the parks. Yeah, one of the discussion topics is that I've identified is homelessness and you are divided on the bathrooms down, the 7th Street bathrooms downtown.
And the downtown bathrooms are included in that plan. So I don't know what, I mean, we have kind of a schedule where we're working, they are included, but they're not.
Right.
I don't know where they're at.
Some, some of your feedback has been to remove them, discontinue them or reconfigure them in a way to, to deter homeless and, and usage or occupancy other than to use them as a restroom. And so I think that's, homelessness is a topic we need to cover today in multiple subtopics. So I have it in the discussion topics tab. But if we work our way through the, the rest of your consensus, sculpture tour, the bathroom, continuing with the bathroom renovations, permitting software, which that will be a software transition and a sizable investment. But Development Services is anxious to get started with that. There was consensus around a training position in the fire department and continued funding for paramedic training. Wayfinding signage, the fact that it's faded and, and the content needs to be updated. I believe there was a comment questioning whether we could discontinue it or, or whether we, we needed it. But there, there were five yeses as far as addressing it.
I certainly wouldn't want to get rid of, I think they're really kind of unique. And if my mind is drifting, those signs have kind of got me to someplace I was supposed to be going. You know, just, oh yeah, I got to turn it. And they're pretty, I mean, fading, but, but they're, as city signs go, they're actually.
The faces of them are holding up, it's the backsides that are fading. But my comment to staff was that they're, they're not making the positive impression they used to unless we deal with that, that fading.
The backside of the faces.
Yeah, if you look at the, the black on the backside, it's fading down to bare metal.
My feeling was always that blue was not a color that stood out and really commanded attention as you're looking at the streetscape in front of you.
And that, that whole artistic logo design was a kind of a branding process that culminated in that. And so there's the blue ones for, you know, out in the community and then the orangish ones in the downtown, but they have the same graphical theme to them. So I don't know what we're in for to, in terms of cost and effort to address those signs, but they, they are showing their age.
I guess my comment on here was to either maintain them or eliminate them.
Oh, so make them look good or don't do them at all, yep, okay. The upcoming audit, there was consensus around that. Again, that's going to be a sizable price tag. Economic development, building the fund balance back, replacement strategies for equipment and software. Boards and commissions, there was a little bit of division on some of the subtopics for boards and commissions, but, and I think I put that as a discussion topic as well. But my sense was that there was general receptivity to taking a look at that, that policy, refreshing it, looking at residency requirements and maybe not so much in terms of, oh, I was surprised to see there didn't seem to be as much around recruitment or marketing, but I know we've had that conversation individually that we struggle to get applicants. So another element of that potentially is revisiting how many members we have on boards and how many boards and commissions we have, which that could be a little bit more of a conversation generator. But the one thing that rose was, to the top was the policy in general. Individual elements of what the water customer accounting approved, got varying levels of support, but there seemed to be consensus around high usage notification alerts for our customers, leadership development in the police department, and then further capital expenditure planning in Public Works. The demolition items, which. The demolition items, which, um, I, I've identified as a topic for conversation as well. We had a handful of demolition items and, um, there was varying, uh, feedback on, on the old pool. In fact, I'm not so sure that tabulation is right because I, my recollection is that one of you wanted to hang on to the old pool or were at least neutral to that. But we can work through that. Um, so I don't want to read you each one of these items, but you can see that we're, you know, we're kind of splintering it at this point, but there's still consensus. It kind of gets back to the point the mayor was making of having to divide up, uh, capacity amongst departments. And see what's reasonable for them to be able to tackle amongst their other, um, daily activities and responsibilities. But, um, I'll give you a, an opportunity to take a look at that and see if you had any, have any questions or feedback.
One question I'd ask this very light humored way, but. Who has something against summer day camp? I'm just, or was there an issue with it? The summer day camp, I was just sort of surprised to see it down as low as it was. I mean, it's not low low, but I guess it fell low because of the ranking of priority.
Right, um, yeah, there was consensus that agreement on it being a goal, it just wasn't as high of a priority.
From my point of view, I'd like us to get back at all the programming we had before COVID. But we're, we know we're short staffed and we need special people to operate some of those camps and programs. And we haven't found them, so then it, to me, that, that becomes a question to the staff to may decide. When they got the ability to properly operate the program.
Because a lot of those personnel, I'm guessing, are seasonal help. I mean, just for summer camp itself, I mean, you need supervisors, but it's. I'm hoping we could find seasonal help for that, if the price is right.
Well, we received a grant last year that helped us increase our wages, which I think helped, uh, our ability to hire. And I think we have a little bit of that funding left, but not through the entire year. So our conversation's been that we're going to have to take a look at that wage rate and maintain it, if not increase it, to be competitive. And then, you know, we've had similar conversations and you've received emails about lifeguards, kind of the same. Uh, need to get the, the wage rate as competitive as we can there as well. So I, I think staffs proceeding with summer day camp. Um, if you're, if you recall, there were a laundry list of a different programming items in there. Senior programming was one, special populations was another. Right, um, and those, those are two that we struggle with in particular. Um, and then I think one of the discussion topics I identified was, uh, play day in the park. There, there was a little bit of division on your part about, uh, play day in the park.
So if, if they become priorities, then we put the energy in to fill in those spots.
I'm sorry, I'm changing subjects on you. I was just going to comment that on the pool demolition, I kind of see that being, uh. Paired with the, the removal of the tennis courts over there. Wouldn't imagine we'd go in to demolish one thing and do it in two passes. So if the tennis courts are priority, then, uh, I would just think it would make sense to do the pool at the same.
Yeah, well, and that, that's how I, it, it's odd to attribute it to arts and humanities. But, uh, that's how I kind of grouped our, the demolition items that we had. And I was surprised to see the feedback kind of split them. Now, I, we did have conversation about, uh, the tennis courts in Sunset and transitioning them to a dog park. And there seemed to be quite a bit of feedback that, that liked that idea. So that may not be a total demolition, we may try to make use of the fence, but get the horseshoe pits out of the interior. But I, I was kind of of the same mind, if we, if we had agreement, we could let one demolition contract and, and. Uh, deal with the, the old pool, the north tennis courts, keeping the south ones for pickleball. And then, uh, deal with Sunset as well, but.
Well, I think that speeds the pickleball projects along as well, so that's, that all ties together in my mind. Pickleball players are, are ready to go.
Yeah, I think you're right. Um, I don't know that it was intentional on anybody's part, but if, as I looked at the responses, it seemed like those demolition projects splintered. But is, is there consensus about, um. Those three demolition projects recognizing that Sunset Park would be retained with the intention of being a dog park?
Thought, uh, liked Commissioner Ryan's idea of making the horseshoe pit.
Yeah, no, that's why, yeah, that's why I'm saying, we, we'd still have to, we'd have to work the ground in the, in the interior. It's got slots for play and horseshoe posts.
I didn't realize it's that much space there.
Yeah, um, I think we probably do need to run a public process so the neighborhood has an opportunity to, to provide feedback. But I'm hopeful that, given its location up against Broadway and kind of tucked in that far corner of the park. It, uh, may, may not receive a lot of opposition or concern.
Well, if this pickleball really takes off like everyone talks like it is, uh. Is there opportunity to salvage the Sunset Tennis Courts?
Well, I think our best opportunity to salvage the surface is the south, uh, courts at, at Oakdale. Just, uh, kind of the condition they're in and then being able to put a, a post tension concrete surface on top of them. Having said that, I suppose you can put post, you, you could prepare the subgrade for post tension concrete about anywhere. Um, the, the donor project is pretty far along, they, they're keyed in on Oakdale. And, um, where we're at is, is getting a designer on board to design the, the fence work so we can put it all out to bid. Get a final cost and then confirm that the donors have or will raise the.
I, I guess I'm thinking more just, uh, leveling the concrete and sealing it, filling in the cracks.
Yeah, we, we, before we ever proceeded down the path with the tennis courts that we did. We assessed all those courts and the cost to, to do that and then the likely longevity. And we made an initial conclusion that it just wasn't cost effective to try to salvage the current surface. That's where the, that, that's why post tension is so appealing to me, is it won't crack up.
A different game and, you know, could even just blacktop it.
Yeah, um, so Jeff, how many, the, how many pickleball courts will the south tennis courts accommodate? So, um, with the donor project, which is, I'm, and moving forward, we should be able to put ten in Oakdale.
I guess I'm thinking more along the lines of having things in separate areas of town.
I, I think from when we looked at the tennis courts, we didn't feel like we could just put a surface on it and it would last. Right, yeah, Sunset is asphalt and it's, I mean, there's some big, I don't, I think we'd have to go in and redo the old base. I don't think you could put, I don't think you could put a coat of asphalt over the top of it or concrete without going down, getting into the subgrade and redoing it. I mean, there's some pretty big wide cracks at Sunset. It's probably, I would say it's the worst, but it's the worst, it's the worst condition of any of the tennis courts that we have in the system. Yeah, I'm kind of, if we have a donor that's willing to, to do the majority of it, I think we start at Oakdale and we'll see how that works out.
For the demo of the old pool, is that tied to putting, and I'll just call it the wedding chapel, but. All is one project or we're just going to demo it, put grass in?
Right, the intention would be demo it, put grass in, that creates an open space for the River Festival to use, program in a different way. But then I think the, the long-term vision is trying to market that possibility and solicit donations or an endowment. Or, um, something through the Arts and Humanities Foundation. So the intent would just be to get the, the old pool and up off the ground. It's in pretty rough shape. So back to the summer day camp, the staff is, is proceeding forward with summer day camp. The other areas we have, we've tried to market to specialist, recreation specialists with certifications. And haven't had nearly as much luck in the, uh, special populations category in particular.
Upgrading the Microsoft three sixty-five is, there been a cost estimate on that?
No, uh, we've been looking at the functionality and we're just getting started on that.
I was shocked visiting with Holly one day of how old and dated, uh, her word was.
Yeah, we have a long history of that, um, as an organization, it's just, uh, uh, cost avoidance, I guess. Um, there, there's a little bit to be said in terms of stability, not being on the, the, the bleeding edge, but I wouldn't say that's the case.
We just, it's going to be at some point where you're not going to have support at all.
Right, yep. Yep, I, that, I think that's why it's on our radar.
Yeah, and I think under, under Scott's direction, we're, we're looking to be more proactive about, you know, when do we upgrade rather than waiting? Well, I think we did in, in the past as we kind of waited till end of life and then we limped along for another ten years and then we upgraded. And so we've, we've been more intentional about, okay, we know we got to go to three sixty-five, what's the process? How do we get there and trying to plan for that? Um, and so I think, you know, Scott's very intentionally looking at the future and when we need to do things, uh, for, to increase our capacity.
In a way that we have. Talk about replacement schedules, software, uh, across the organization, software and, yeah, hardware are things that we're focusing on.
And you go three sixty-five, that's a continuing annual.
Yep.
But you know, when you upgrade too quick, you find, oh, that system wasn't as good as we thought it was. And Microsoft has had a few of those over the years and, and your ancillary software doesn't always work well. We've found that in medical industry, uh, not everything worked well on the newest version of Microsoft. So, you know, people are very comfortable with what they know works. And, uh, if, there's a balance between being too soon and waiting too long.
Take it, you're not going to learn another software package when the hospital opens.
Yeah, as long as my little part that I have to deal with works. But it's, uh, it's when, you know, if I have to learn it once every ten years, no problem. You know, or even five or six years, it's, it's, because everybody has to learn it. And, and there's a loss of productivity when you're training everybody all at once on a new system. Uh, and data gets lost, I mean, there's some nightmares, uh.
There, there's definitely a balance there. I think the two things that we've been guilty of in the past is letting that linger too long and not budgeting for it. And putting ourselves in a position where the, it might be, objectively, it, it's probably time to make that transition, but we haven't planned for it. And so that's where, um, inventorying the software and the hardware and having a replacement schedule is.
I would like to hear a number to know what the challenge is, what, uh, Dr. San is, is true for everyone that. Because of our generation that's come up and having to change programs every two or three years. But I think with AI and, uh, the stability of, of a singular platform. Uh, we're going to realize a lot of efficiencies there and, and the ability of our staff to operate quicker. I mean, I think that the AI is going to be a big assist to the longer, it's not here yet, I don't believe from what I read in the media. But, uh, I mean, everybody's got concerns about the positives and negatives of that. But I think, uh, it's going to be a tool that everybody's going to want to adopt and that we're going to need to be on a platform that supports the best of that.
Does our hardware run the new software? Because other issues run into sometimes is that old faithful laptop doesn't, doesn't run the new program.
Yeah, I mean, the answer is, is at this point, no, we, everything isn't, doesn't just work with Office three sixty-five. And that's the process that they're going through to try to figure out what does an upgrade look like for all the systems that we have that are connected. We've got a lot of different systems between the police department and the, you know, financial software, all of that stuff has to work together. So we, that's, I think they're kind of in the exploratory phase of, let's figure out, we know we have to go to three sixty-five at some point. Uh, how do we make that transition work? Uh, how do, how does it work with all the other softwares? Do we have to do other upgrades? I mean, we've seen things like, you know, right now, we're in the middle of upgrading our water customer accounting software. Um, from a system that's, uh, an, an old IBM system with the green screen, I mean, a really old system. We're updating that and as we do that, we're finding that we have to update other things in order for that to work. So it's a process and it, uh, likely three sixty-five will cost us two or three hundred thousand dollars to get into it. Now, I don't know what the, we don't really know what the annual is going to be. Um, but it's, uh, it's going to be a costly, costly upgrade. And then, you know, that's just for three sixty-five, there may be some other softwares and hardwares that we have to upgrade as we go through the process. So I think Scott's the right guy to get us through that project, project though. I mean, he's, he's, um, done a really great job with the water customer accounting and making sure that we're on top of that as that goes through. Um, it's just, it's going to take some time, it's going to take a lot of focus and energy to manage through a big project like that. But in the end, I do think we will be more efficient, I mean, we will be, uh, more able from an IT side. Being all on the same thing, we'll be able to service our, our internal customers better. And then that will, I think, translate to being able to inter, to service our external customers, our citizens better, so, but it's certainly a process.
Well, yeah, and Scott also inherited transitioning off of the AS four hundred, the, the green screen that Jacob was describing. And that's the example of letting it go on too long, just avoiding it and, you know, and. We're, it, it, part of the, the work he had to do is just figure out all the dependencies on the AS four hundred and then figure out how to. We, we're letting it get so far past us that we now have to convert all that data and, and retain it as usable in another form. So it's a, it's a balance, we, as much as we might not like to being forced, we don't want to be so far behind that, that we have performance problems either. And it's, then it's going to be an unavoidable cost of operations, uh, we just have to plan for it.
Right.
Put just, put the money in the account and you just spend it, give us a tab at the end.
He just gave you a blank check.
Please support the change, the change, yes.
Well, one thing, we know what's going to happen if we don't change it.
Yeah.
And that's going to be more costly. And, and one of the clients that you mentioned are employees, you know, if employees are frustrated because the system doesn't work. You know, that's probably one or two people who are going to leave for something that could have been avoided.
Yeah, change is hard too. Yep, um, it, it's got to perform and the longer we, we linger, the more we're just customizing and fighting it internally.
As employees age out, you're going to have new employees come that.
Yeah.
This is what they know. So, man, start making fun of all the empty.
So we promote the older employees to something, we, we use their talents, you know, we don't want to lose them, we just. Use their talent.
So one thing, uh, of note there in the Parks and Rec, um, Animal Services Additional Staffing. There seemed to be support for the staffing, um, may not have been a high priority. But that gets, starts to get to our twenty-four seven response approach. Uh, I, and that's my primary concern is how much workload we're putting on them. And then if it can generate some capacity for additional, uh, shelter hours, um, that'd be a bonus. But it really depends on what we can do in, in the way of staffing and scheduling. Some of the other things, uh, we've talked about, the landfill, it fell soil deficit, yellow curbing is a new topic I've thrown into the conversation. That could be quite a bit of contracting expense. Um, on the court side, there were a handful of things and again, they kind of splintered. But, uh, pre-sentencing out evaluation and supporting that process seemed to, um, have some consensus. Um, things that didn't were, um, urinalysis testing and, and facilities for that, uh, didn't seem to have a lot of support.
Um, if I could just give an unusual link, but when you talk about the bathrooms on Seventh Street and who's using them. People who are having trouble with the law, who are then secondarily homeless, that, these things are tied together more than it looks like from the, the surface. And, you know, folks are on the wrong side of the court system who can't, you know, meet their probation officer. They don't make their, their hearings, they get arrested, they put out in the street, eventually they drop down to homeless. And, you know, they're kind of invisible connections, but, but, uh, there are a lot of little holes that have to be filled in. And, and it looks like, you know, a relatively small thing, but it may have benefit. And a lot of other social issues we're, we're trying to fix.
That is consistent with, you know, the, the information on it. It's consistent with the feedback from both municipal court and the police department that, and we're not going to cite our way out of it, there are underlying issues. Um, part of, uh, the, the things that municipal court brought up were what they identified as things that their clientele struggled with. To go get the drug assessment and do some of that, that, those required elements to be back before the judge in preparation for probation or, or sentencing. Um, and so the premise would be that we're trying, there may be some income qualification, but that. but that we're trying to provide some of that, those services. But um, can't remember if that, if, we might make note of that. If it wasn't, we can kind of review all those items and, discussion topic, but they, they did seem to splinter as you responded to them.
You know, you'd think some of those things in a society like ours would be free. I mean, if you look at the person who's least able to pay for all these services and get off work to go to all these things, it's most of these guys coming in for, who, who are ordered to have these services. And, and lack of the services just puts them in a revolving circuit, so they, they never get out. So they're always a burden.
Yeah, um, I'm trying to figure out whether we dive into that topic now or whether we.
Just a rhetorical comment.
In a minute.
Think about it tonight.
Well, I, I, it's a discussion in, in the discussion topics tab, homelessness and the related things are certainly on that list. Um, so other than that, and, it's a little bit of ancillary items, but that is what either was broad consensus around.
Yep. Drop down to the fire department. I, I get the letters mixed up, but the S, I'm gonna see.
Self-contained breathing apparatus?
That one, yeah. Are, are we, Dan, are we out of, I mean, we have enough equipment for the folks to use now? Is that like, I need this tomorrow or this guy's not?
No, we're, we're trying to just future plan.
Okay.
Because there is a life cycle.
Yeah, it, and chiefs knew enough that, that it's, well, uh, from my perspective, what we've done in the past is when they are at the end of their life, it's an undeniable expense that we didn't see coming and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we either, you know, uh, replace, it, it may not make sense to replace a little bit at a time, because you want standardized units and, and there's some, the benefits to making a one-time purchase. But then can we factor that in with other expenses though, that we smooth all this out? Because you end up with public safety uh, dominating um, those, you know, undeniable uh, needs, in comparison to parks and some of the other things we're trying to accomplish if we don't have it planned well enough.
So that's money we could just sock away somewhere and.
Yeah, we, we, staff's been working on capital improvement planning and trying to, get a thorough inventory and try to come up with an annual cost. And we're, it, well, uh, it's gonna be a push, but we plan to have that forty as part of the budget conversation. And that starts to then turn into a, across the organization, in the general fund, if we could dedicate this amount of money and this long-term planning, we think we can start to address a lot of this scheduling and replacement uh, challenges.
So then we'll be looking at our reserve uh, decisions and then.
Yep, um, and, and my one, number one priority is that, we don't spend out of reserve to the point that we just create a tsunami somewhere, you know, five, six years out. But if there's a way to use it to, to figure out that, that longer term plan and then use reserves to supplement that, um, uh, prudently, then yes, that, that's what we plan to bring back to you. We're still uh, kind of vetting it to make sure it's, it's comprehensive and, and inclusive. We're also trying to, uh, we're struggling with what goes in the CIP, what is a more of an operational budget item? And how do we make sure that the operational budget's kind of keeping that same balance? And then the other part of the conversation we're having is, uh, do, are we able to make annual purchases or should we be making a large purchase? And if interest rates were what they used to be, we'd be talking about lease financing them or doing something like that. We're gonna have to take a, a hard look at the, you know, the financial impacts of that. But trying to, number one quantify, and number one, have a thorough inventory. Number two, figure out the life cycle, quantify that in the aggregate, then quantify it in a way that it's, a recurring uh, number to, to budget to on an annual basis. Um, trying to bring all of that together for you.
Curiosity, which is an air pack average cost. Last time we purchased was a little over eight thousand dollars. For one, for one unit with a, with a new SCBA model. Really? They're typically eight to ten years. Uh, and that's also uh, somewhat dependent and compliant with NFPA if they make any recommended changes. But you typically can get eight years uh, out of them.
Which is why the city manager and the finance director have sticker shock when the fire department shows up and says, oh, we need all new SCBAs.
Well, you guys have to breathe to fight a fire.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's sort of like the turf on the baseball. We know we're gonna have to replace it. It's a big ticket item. Wait, you get a hundred of those when you buy them?
Uh, last time we did, I think we had more than that, because we have to maintain a certain overflow. If there's a, a larger incident, we not only have to provide them for everybody that's on ship, but it's not that. We have the twenty some firefighters on ship, so we don't get eighties. So we're, we're below that. We get, there is a, a formula that we have, so there are spares. Uh, but we don't go overboard with the spares either, because they do break. And then we have to get them fixed and our, actually, we have our own internal person certified to repair them. So we save money there. Um, so we try to do our due diligence.
And compressors to refill them, right?
And the compressors. Compressors have to purify the air and filter the air and there are certain requirements for those as well, and they're not cheap either.
So even just doing quick math, fifty of them, you're looking at a half million dollars, which is a, you know, that turf, how many fields? But it, it's a big enough item to.
Right.
Set up a little savings account, little Christmas club account and put that money.
It's, it's an undeniable need. The last thing we're gonna do is, is try to cut a corner in that regard. So we just have to see it coming.
Same packs, they just plug in their own hose and mask.
So everybody uses the same masks in the sense of the same uh, model and make. Okay, everybody is given the same level of mask, but each has their own mask, that's a requirement. And everything is identical. So you could take someone's small mask or medium mask or large mask, it's the same mask, just a different size. All the connections are internal with our whole system. So we can use any pack and connect our mask to it. The mask hookup is right at the nose cone. And so they all have to be the same. Because if you have a situation on having to rescue another firefighter, you've got to be able to disconnect or reconnect, use your buddy breather, things of that nature. So that's why they've all gotta be the same.
The firefighter's gear, they just have the mask and then they plug into whatever.
Yes, unit. Yes, the SCBAs across our, our whole organization are a gunner. Or there's Bill Scott? Yes.
Okay, anything else you see on there that you have questions about or wanna talk about?
Automatic payment plans and the water over-usage, that's something that's slated to come through with the new software?
Yeah, there's.
I mean, that's.
There's two things going on there. There's the, the software functionality, but there's also the, the ordinance, the policy setting aspect of it. From leak waivers and forgiveness to putting people on payment plans. Um, and then the other one that was on there is uh, winter quarter averaging. You, right now, you have to be an established customer, so that first year, you, you, you don't have that available to you. And we have a lot of customers that would like that. We could set some generic, you know, this many people in your household or, or some number until you have an established usage, which from a customer service standpoint, I think would be well received.
So the policy changes would be relatively low lying fruit once we have the.
Yeah.
Software. The water customer accounting software upgrade will allow everything that he just said about level payment, all of those things. But there's another software package that we're upgrading that deals with the leak monitoring. And so that's the, that's the automatic read that sucks the information into the water tower and sends it back to, um, back to the city. That software is what will give you the information about leak detection. So that will be on the heels.
Individual customer.
Yep, and that will be after, so that's probably, probably a year away.
Yeah, that's the one I want. That would save.
Maybe not that long, but that, uh, but that, yeah, that will be part of that.
Yeah, it, it's a compatibility issue between the meters and the meter software and the water billing software. The meter software has the usage, the water billing software has the customer information. And when we purchased the water meters, that was a selling point of the water meters. But then the, the water billing software upgrade uh, was a companion item. That, we're still trying to work through that. I, I agree with you. It, it's, it's a terrific customer service. It's also self-preservation for us as the water provider to help those customers see it coming versus, being surprised by a large bill.
Thousand dollar surprise last year to a leak that took six weeks to find, but, it's amazing how much water your backyard will hold.
Yeah.
True.
And, and part of, part of the policy decisions are, we currently have a policy that you get one, you know, forgiveness if you can demonstrate that it was unknown and take a back and look at your history. But clarifying some of that and, and formalizing that in policy will, it come along with setting some of these other um, functionalities in place.
And did I see Venmo?
Yeah.
Method, I don't really even know what that is, but is that built into the new software spell or?
Well, water, water customer counting brought it up as their suggestion, so I'm uh, would suspect it's.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that it does. Debbie's shaking her head no, so I'm not, I'm not sure that it, if it does.
The younger demographic uses Venmo, I can attest to that.
There, there was uh, noticeably neutrality on your part as it related to that, to Venmo. And maybe that's a, you know, just a lack of familiarity.
Well, it's a great way, parents can send you money so that you can pay your bills all out of the same account. It's what it.
All right, well, if we're ready to move on, the next category I had, I called reservations. And what I mean by that is we have a mixture of, um, well, I basically sorted for high no responses. Uh, and, and that kind of fleshed out division on your part. So expanding the role of the law enforcement citizen review board had three noes, one yes and one neutral. Rerouting the Fourth Street Railroad had three noes, two yeses. Uh, the museum expansion was split two, two and one. The downtown bathrooms, and I have to admit, as a line item, I, without additional detail, I'm not sure what, the, as you looked at that, what you, what that meant to you as you were responding to it. But it, it really was a subtopic of the homelessness uh, conversation. Um, relocating the media relations to the, the CT department. Um, the, from a functional standpoint and what they're doing, uh, the most day in and day out. Uh, organizationally, from staff's perspective, it makes a lot of sense to have it in the CT department. And I don't know if we need to discuss that further, if you had specific concerns about um, that relocation. But um, there's a lot of, there's plenty of dialogue between city manager's office and CT as relates to, whether that's branding or the social media aspects of it, but just the, the technical, uh, covering the meetings, having the equipment, setting up for something like this. Um, it, it's very much uh, more technical than.
My hesitation that may have been, I didn't know exactly what media relations. I remember when Rachel was here.
Right.
I think she was in that.
She was.
Role and I kind of knew the stuff she was doing. Uh.
Well, this is more, when we, when we took over Salina Media Connection and their role, um, it's that. And then it's also social media activity, uh, and, you know, our, our social media feeds. Uh, and then technical support for meetings like this.
Person who's interacting with the community is someone separate from the technical.
Yes, well, just, just be clear, we're talking about these two guys in either corner of the room. But they, there is a creative aspect to it. They, they do a great job on the social media side.
One will have to go out to a opening or to a meeting or, you know, reword what we say to push out to the media. Uh, another person actually has to physically get it out.
And we're tasking the same person with all of that. And so um, it, it's, it's, in my estimation, there's a lot of, uh, equipment, technology, software aspects of the functionality of it. And the two individuals that we have in the position are good at the messaging and the branding and the graphics as well.
That, that's one of those questions that I had, I had a problem with, because, again, I feel as, as a commissioner, we govern, we don't manage. To me, that's the departments that know what makes the most sense for them. That's, you know, to me, that's something that's handled internally, that I don't need to be involved in that decision, you know?
Yep, I, I, in all honesty, I thought it was more of an FYI, this is one of the things that's in the works and, and, but then when I saw.
That would have been a great after.
Right.
I don't know enough about what the departments do and how much better it would be if they were, you know, if they were combined. So again, I think that's a.
Understood. When I, when I saw the two noes, I wanted.
Just add that we hire the city manager to run the city. And so that is ultimately what was presented out there ought to filter or, be in position to filter through the city manager and whoever directs the media effort. So I think the departments would work in concert with that centralized uh, overview.
So.
I mean, it's good for us to know that there's, you're making a change or you're making, you know, you're doing that and the reasons why. But I don't know if we need to be involved in that decision, so.
Well, I was a no on that, because they are two totally separate things. Yeah, sure, they use some of the same equipment, but uh, you know, I, I, I don't like the idea of someone getting pulled out of IT because we need a cameraman.
Yeah, well, they, they would be dedicated for the media relations purpose. They'd just be supervised by the CT director.
And, and I think it's, it's an issue if you don't have multi-talented, I'm, I happen to know these two people and what they can do. They are able to do both. If you get someone who's just IT or just a media person.
Right.
Uh, then, then you have the issue of maybe having to create another position.
So, and unless there's strong opposition, that, that is the, our organizational intent. I just felt an obligation to bring it up when I saw the, the opposition to it. But what you're seeing right now is, is that's how we're performing currently. Uh, we just need to make it so on the org chart. Um, the ESG grant, there, uh, one of you had a question whether that was uh, equity and social. Yeah, no, it is emergency solutions grants. It's the, the state program that uh, uh, we funnel funding to uh, Catholic charities and Ashby House and some other ongoing programs. Um, the, again, homelessness comes up, but facilitating the monthly homelessness task force meetings on the assumption that, that we need, we know, if we acknowledge that we need to have a conversation and that we need to come up with a plan, I, I do think that conversation is broader than just us in the room or even the city organization. And it probably starts with some facilitation of a, a broader conversation. But um, there was, you know, you were divided as a group on that.
Personal feeling, I guess, that we ought to leave that to folks like Salina Grace. They're more effective at dealing with the, the, do we call them hardcore uh, homeless people? Uh, facilitating it, it seems fine to me. We're making, uh, we're giving them financial support. But I'd rather see our efforts go towards uh, seeing affordable housing be available to help the people that are sort of in the transient area of homelessness or in and out of it. Uh, usually that's, has to do with affordable housing. So I think our role more directly is, is uh, to pass that off to the very capable organizations we've got in town, let them, we could, certainly rise up and help and facilitate that as we did with the one conference we had, but I think they should take the lead.
Well, they can take the lead, but it's, it's good to have someone in-house who, you know, and facilitation may mean, having the police chief at a meeting. It may mean having uh, uh, human relations at a meeting or, or just, you know, being aware of what city services are already out there now that can be pulled in. Facilitating doesn't have to mean that we run it. It may just mean, you know, open up a room.
See, I think the definition, because to me facilitate means we're in charge of facilitating the meeting. I agree. I agree a hundred percent. We need someone involved in those conversations. But again, I'm a little bit with Commissioner Ryan. I'm not sure we're the ones that lead because I'm not sure what department to do that and staffing to do that.
Right, and, you know, we, we don't have to lead it. Guessing chemistry should be the catalyst, you know?
I think we need to lead to get the conversation started. And because, you know, like Commissioner Ryan said, we've got other agencies. Well, they got their hands full. And when there's problems, specifically downtown, who gets blamed for the problems? The city and the police department? They don't blame these agencies. They blame the city for letting it happen.
We, a good analogy would be with solid waste. The city facilitated the conversation, but the zero waste initiative has now on its own reached out to private industry, private business, you know? So it's developing a life of its own. You know, we were the facilitator, but we don't sit there and run every meeting.
Right, I agree.
It's, it's that spark to get it, get it started.
The forum we had in December had nothing but positive comments about that. And I think people would like to see something like that continue, whether the city facilitates it or. My idea is just a group of stakeholders, concerned people, agencies, to put it together and, and not let it be a once a year thing, oh, we've got to do something.
So I don't claim to be the subject matter expert on this. And as somebody of you had already said, we don't, I don't think we have anybody on staff that is at the moment. But I think what we could do is have enough of a conversation of the various providers and the various participants in this process to come back with an inventory of issues. Because it's, it's the bathroom, it's vagrancy, it's the court issue. It, it's a whole host of, of different issues that we may have varying opinions on whether we have a role to play or not. I, I don't know, I'm not suggesting that we, as a city, have the lead role or that we have a larger role. But I, the bathrooms downtown in their current state is just going to be, continue to be a problem unless we can come up with a solution. I think there are, there is an expectation that PD, the police department's going to be able to solve it through enforcement. And I don't think that's entirely realistic. I think there might be some things from a court approach, whether it's municipal court or district court. But every one of those is unique and pretty complicated. But I'm, I'm not at all suggesting that we take the lead. But we're part of that conversation enough that I feel some obligation to try to sort through it to some degree.
Changes would necessarily involve us either from a regulatory or a surface provider perspective. So we at least need to have somebody in the room or available on the phone, you know?
And some of it may come back to funding and, you know, where's the funding going to come from and what role might we play?
Could start off, but it could be used on bathrooms downtown?
Um, maybe. I, that's a possibility. The, the bathroom conversation, some of the feedback that you provided in response to the survey was a recon, well, as I mentioned earlier, either removing the bathrooms altogether or reconfiguring them in a way, kind of a European open air type style that is a bathroom, but it's not a shelter that, to be housed overnight. That's a pretty unique, and it would be a sizable project.
I'd made that comment and I would add that probably really only need one downtown. I think having to go to the restroom is a personal problem. Or maybe the, the business owners downtown, maybe the bid district should work on solutions for this more than us. But I don't know why we would have to maintain more than one facility. And if it was open air, as I've seen in some other countries, you know, you've got no roof and there's a lot of air involved, it'd be very easy to clean and not be a shelter. It'd just be a place that's a restroom.
I have a solution. Tear down the structure and, and just make it a one-hauler.
Make it a what?
A one-hauler.
That's what I thought you said. Just wanted to make sure.
If you want me. Yeah.
You know, as a public service, I, I think public restrooms are good. I mean, ever been traveling with kids downtown and they got to go and every restaurant or store says bathrooms, if they have them, are only for, for customers' use or, you know, I gotta go now. I mean, there's nothing more beautiful than seeing that public restroom sit.
I, I assume that was the nexus back in the day, that individual retailers didn't want to provide the restrooms to the public. And so there was a city provided bathroom. The homelessness issue creates a new challenge.
If we close those bathrooms down, I think we need to prepare for the fact there's going to be more instances of public urination and defecation. And that would be a no for me. I think we need to keep them open.
It's true. Or, or they go into the businesses and then you have that issue too, so.
Well, there's, that's all true. And that's, I'm kind of leaning toward a restructuring of, of more your porta potty type thing.
So as much, some of the conversation has been to not have a role or have a minimal role. But let me, if I can, pull you on just initial conversations with, trying to identify the various service providers and have that starting conversation intent being inventorying issues and services provided without volunteering ourselves to solve those issues?
You know, sometimes the hardest thing is just calling a meeting. You know, what was great about the forum in December was a reputable agency, us, was calling a meeting in a designated location, invited people to come, and citizens showed up, agencies showed up. And that's facilitating. You know, if we can just get that ball rolling again, I think the, the motivation of the people in those agencies will provide the energy for that momentum to, to keep moving.
And that's essentially what other communities are doing, what I've seen.
I think a big question we need to ask ourselves is our constituency, are they happy with the current dynamic? Or do they think we need to expand and improve on it? And I think the answer would be yes. And I think part of that is we need to be, have a hand in that conversation and be, as you said, an ear and a face in that room when that conversation is happening. And.
And may I ask if that comes with the price tag of two mil or, you know? I, I think that question has to be asked with the dollar cost associated with it. You're going to put it to the public. Everybody wants the utopian society, but nobody wants to pay for it.
But nobody wants these folks on the street downtown paying on the street, you know? And that's a cost you don't measure in dollars unless it's lost business. But, you know, some things people, you know, are more important to folks than their money. And, you know, most of the services that are being provided for folks on this side of life are being provided by our social safety net organizations anyway. We're not, city's not paying for it. You know, some are government services that anybody is eligible for. But if you took away, you know, United Way Catholic Charities, Ashby, I mean, all those agencies, I don't know how many millions of dollars of services that represents, but we're actually getting off kind of easy as it is right now, as far as what's being provided.
I think it's worth mentioning that there's a, a public safety component to this conversation as well. And we had an incident at Walmart that I think highlighted that. And whether we like it or not, we are going to be part of that conversation, whether we enter into it voluntarily or we get dragged into it because an incident has occurred.
And, and maybe this is a subject for a study session because we, we talk about this all after, and, you know, we, we had a, we had a meeting that I guess, I don't want to say the disappointing thing is I didn't hear any solutions come out of that meeting. You know, we listened to the public and everybody's like, well, we, you know, we need to do this, we need to do that. We also need to meet with the providers because there's a, there's a point, are the providers helping the situation? And I don't mean this in a bad way, or are they hindering the situation that they're bringing more homeless to the community? You know, I mean, there's, there's a whole realm of different ways to look at, at what's going on. So that's something, again, I think to facilitate a, a task force, we, we need to be involved in those conversations, but.
And that, that may be the solution that we arrived at in December, that we need to have a regular, you know, consortium, then meets regularly. It's certainly a first step.
And I think people want that, you know, from the feedback I got, well, now what? You know?
And that's the thing, we came out of there and there was no real direction given or maybe that's our fault, we didn't take that.
But it, it got people informed of what, you know, legally what can and can't be done. And I have asked this question, you know, we heard last night about Salina Grace relocating. Will the homeless problem in downtown move with them or stay where it is? I think it's going to stay.
Time will tell.
Yeah.
Putting my money on staying right now, but.
But we can't, we can't let downtown and our city get to the point like these cities we hear on the news where I have a cousin over by St. Louis who says, oh, we don't go downtown anymore. We, you know, it's disgusting, it's not safe, we don't go down there.
So I'm kind of repeating the question, but if, if staff were to, not stand up a monthly task force, but if, if staff were to inventory the providers, convene a meeting at the staff level and inquire about the issues that they're aware of, the services they provide, the needs or solutions they, they've identified, and report that back as a study session? Would that be an acceptable first step?
I think the server, I think the forum in December outlined, I mean, that slide set would be a pretty good place to start as far as the services available. I think each agency reported fairly well. I think the agencies just need to know there's some legitimacy in their meeting together as a group to start working on this, this issue.
Yeah, and I think we've got.
Would just be to facilitate that first legitimate meeting. Okay, those of us in this room, sit down and, and see if we can come up with a coordinated effort. And, you know, they will be asked of the city, they'll be asked of other agencies. But I don't think it's going to take much resources on our part to facilitate the early conversations, other than to, hey, there's a meeting next Wednesday at 10 o'clock, be there.
I think the group, I think the, the group of players will be, should be pretty large, really, when you start to involve court and sheriff's office and, and there's just additional players. But, but I, I don't, I don't want to head down that road if there isn't consensus on your part that.
People want to know that we're doing something. We're not just ignoring the problem.
No, or that group can constitute itself. But at some point it needs to come to city hall, knowing that if it has legitimate concerns and there's going to be at least an opportunity to be heard. Because some of those solutions will require action on our part, probably. I don't know what it would be, but I think it just needs to get a, get a start there.
Yes, I would say to them, short of asking us to get out our checkbook, what can we do to help you facilitate community conversation? We'd like to assist in that way. But it'd be, the responsibility would be on them to propose the form and the nature and the participants and that kind of thing, but.
You know, and it may not be a check, you know, if you can throw money at this, but if you don't put the money in the right place, nothing gets solved. I mean.
No, we are throwing money at it now.
But I mean, the, the changes in the court function, you know, that's not so much money. It's the way you do business. You know, referral for housing, you know, the housing is there, the programs are there, but this, you know, Salina Grace serves to match the need with the, with the resource. It may not take as much money or new money because somebody's paying this money now anyway. So it's just a matter of having a coordinated effort. You know, there's, there's a lot of invisible services that, that are provided in our city that don't always get hooked up with the people who need them.
I, I guess so we can kind of move along. We're kind of, we're, we're.
I expected this to be one of the big ones, but yeah.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is maybe if city staff could get with the, the players that we had at the, at the table at the, the last meeting and come up with some type of joint meeting to, to, to bring back to the commission and, and I don't know what that looks like. I'm going to let you as city staff and let those entities decide how you want to approach that. And when I say approach that, it's how do they see the city becoming involved in that with this issue?
With your permission, I'd broaden that to, what's the community need to do and, and not lead with our checkbook and see where the conversation takes us, but yeah.
I mean, maybe, maybe they, maybe Salina Grace, maybe Ashby House, maybe they have some ideas or maybe they've seen other communities that they have some idea of how we get involved or how the community is. So that would be my suggestion.
If you're okay with that as a group, we'll pull some staff together and make that happen and report back.
One takeaway, are, are we in agreement that we would not want to close the Seventh Street bathroom at this point?
I see that as part of that conversation and we report back.
I mean, today, April 17th, 18th, whatever it is now.
Okay.
I think without knowing the consequences of doing that, I don't think. We take a five minute?
Sure.
It's 10:30 in. Okay, are we back, ready to go? Look at the, okay.
All right, we're still in the category that I titled as reservations. I thought that might be a nice diplomatic way to phrase that. And we left off with the homeless task force and appreciate the direction. We'll, we'll proceed in that direction. Public relations was on the fire department side and, and was not identified as a priority. Bike maintenance along the trails was something that was suggested in our brainstorming session when we last met. And it looks like you're divided on that. The animal shelter expansion, just to be clear, that, that was a physical expansion of the shelter, somewhat necessitated by just capacity challenges. So that may be something that staff feels like they have to bring back to you as a, as a challenge we need to solve. Parks and Rec additional programming is the broad category, you were split. The new justice center, you were split and that is very, very preliminary. ED had a price tag in 80 million plus. So just in the interest of full disclosure, we are not budgeting to that. We're, that, that's, that's a set aside on the capital improvement planning. And one of the things I do have in the discussion topics is the justice center and sheriff's space that's being vacated.
Can you explain exactly what's included in a justice? I was thinking courts, police.
Yeah, no, this was more police department oriented, not, not trying to address the county court issues, if that's what you mean.
Rather be just, if it was a new justice or court system for everybody.
Right, no, that, as it relates to this, that wasn't the intention. One of the discussion items is the public space collaboration with the county. And I don't know what, Mike, I, I don't expect that that will be the culmination of that, but there's, there is some conversation to be had more broadly about the county space needs, our space needs and, and buildings. And that's in the discussion topics tab as well. South substation, that's really just kind of looking out into the future and we're probably not there yet. We had a broader category related to snow plowing and the need to consider some alternate approaches, primarily because of the staffing challenge that we have with being able to staff up CDL licensed drivers. primarily because of the staffing challenge that we have with, uh, being able to staff up CDL licensed drivers. And it's, you know, an isolated need when the season hits. Um, there was general support of the other categories which were, um, um, trying to come up with ways to, to plow with equipment that doesn't require a CDL. There was a third topic in there, but reduced snow plowing, you, three of you were supportive and, and two of you indicated no. Um, and as a little bit of clarification, in fact, one of you, I think, provided a comment on residential streets and that, but what may not have been clear in terms of that description, but if we were to do anything, it would probably be along the lines of, uh, of concentrating on the collectors and arterials and, and lessening our response on the, the, uh, residential streets. So staff's talked about that a number of times, fully recognizing how difficult that might be. Um, I, I don't have statistics on it, but it feels to me like we're getting less and less know events. Um, we get, we're getting a little lucky in that regard, but I would like to pause and ask you for your feedback on, um, decreasing our snow plowing response.
If you had to list the number one thing that you get citizens complaints about over the course of a 12-month period?
Oh, it'd be, yeah, I was gonna say it would be in the top 10. It would certainly take a re-education approach. Uh, take some marketing, um, there, there are a pair of communities out there that, uh, don't, you know, provide the level of service that we do.
I, I would say that snow plowing, in my experience, it doesn't matter what you do, we're gonna get complaints. I mean, I've been in communities where we snowed it, we plowed it to the sides and we got complaints because we see people's driveways shut. We plowed it to the middle and we got complaints because somebody had to drive around the block to get into their driveway. I mean, it's a, it's a, the full gamut, you are always gonna get complaints about snow removal, I think, no matter what we do. Just, it, it's one of those things, you can't make everybody happy with snow removal, no matter, no matter what your approach is.
And the practical difficulty we're up against at the moment is we, we're not saying we're not gonna do residential streets, it just takes that much longer. And so part of it is marketing that, given our staffing level, here's our approach to our response and arterials and collectors are priority and we've got to give our employees time off to recover and recuperate and then get back on duty. And so it may be marketing that get the residentials, but it's gonna take a while, uh, and maybe that starts to shift the expectation.
That suggestion, but would you envision then, uh, in certain circumstances, we don't do it at all in the residential? Or then if you had a four or five inch event, then maybe then you do.
Yeah, we, we.
But it's prioritized to the bottom.
We can take another look at, at what the threshold is for snow plowing in residential street. Um, try to increase that as well.
Cause we do have thresholds.
Oh, yeah, I think we just have the one standard.
Yeah, it's, it's the same standard. So, and I don't have it off the top of my head, but once we hit a certain amount of snow or, or a forecast of a certain amount of snow, that's when we'll start sending people out. And then we obviously start with arterials and collectors and then work our way out to residentials, but at, right now, we clear everything.
Maybe there needs to be.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, some of it I think could depend on, on weather and, you know, if you get a snow, but you know in 48 hours, you're supposed to have 50 degrees and does it make sense to send your snowplows out? And I, and I will say they have a plan and they have followed it and it's been effective, I think, recently. Mostly because we've done a good job of marketing and saying, hey, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna get people out. Uh, you know, there may be a little bit more snow than what you expected, but this is kind of the process and the plan. I think the problem with snow removal and doing it even at the level that we're doing it right now is, is we are required to have so many folks that have CDLs that we're, we're kind of staffing to, to that snow event. So we're, we're trying to keep people staffed and with CDLs, um, for those six or seven events a year, when they wouldn't necessarily have to have a CDL for the rest of that timeframe. So it's really hard to, it's almost like you have to make a decision that, hey, we're gonna do this to a lesser degree so that we can change the way we staff year round. Um, because anything in between, we're gonna do it all, or, I mean, it requires those CDLs. And we are looking at options. Um, the enterprise program does have an option where we can buy a bigger one-ton pickups, put snowplows on them, uh, instead of doing dump trucks that will help some of that. Um, but it's not gonna offset. I mean, we, we require a lot of our people to have CDLs, uh, and, and specifically for snow removal.
And as far as hiring, that is one of our biggest challenges and I don't see a ready solution. It's such a competitive market. If you have a CDL, you have options.
That's good information to understand.
I think my bigger concern on snow removal is the, uh, salt. To go out and salt 100% of the streets on something that might happen, based on the forecast.
Yeah, and I think we do that now to the extent that we do it because we don't know whether we'll be able to get back. So, you know, if it does, that pre-treatment, if it does, if it does turn out to be a bigger event than what we think it's gonna be, then if we didn't pre-treat it, it's gonna take us a lot longer to get to those streets and.
It makes our efforts more, and we, we take a two-phase approach. One is focusing on the areas that are prone to freezing, overpasses and bridges, things like that. And then the other is trying to get it down so that our, our plowing is effective when the time comes. If you can get it down and get that thawing on, under the, the, the accumulation, we're a lot better off, but. Um, we do, we spend a lot of time and resources in terms of whether, we're not just watching, we subscribe to a service and I feel like we do a really good job of trying to, uh, assess the incoming weather and the, the likelihood and then get the word out that we are pre-treating to demonstrate that we're on top of it. I think the biggest issue is being short-staffed and that the time it takes to do a full, uh, plowing across all the residential streets.
So would you hire a CDL? Do you hire, do they have a CDL or can you hire someone and then ask them to get their CDL? How does?
So we do a little bit of both. Um, it, it's, so some of the problem there with hiring somebody who doesn't have a CDL is you may hire somebody and if they're required to have a CDL in that position and then they turn out that they can't get it, or they have a problem getting that CDL, then you're, then you have a person who, you know, what do you do with them? Um, we have though been a little bit more lenient in trying to hire people and get them trained up. Um, but I, I mean, preferably we'd like to have a CDL before we hire them. And, and I think we have kind of made a little bit of transition by including some, some laborers, street laborers, um, at a level, a little bit below what, what a CDL is required, um, so we can hire folks into those positions that, that maybe don't need to drive all the time. Um, but then, you know, once we get them in, we try to, to train them up. But I'll tell you, that's, I mean, we're 10 positions short at least right now in the streets department and it's, it's laborers, it's CDLs of that. Uh, it just, those workers, lots of competition for those workers right now, um, in the market, so.
And we're trying to move away from holding out for CDLs so that we do have laborers for the, the duration of the season. We have, have looked at, at CDL training programs through Slina Tech and, and other options and trying to help them on the job, get, get their CDL, but then you also run the risk of they secure the CDL and then they move on to.
Yeah, and in the last two years, it's actually become more difficult to get and maintain a CDL than it was. There's some additional training required, um, that we have to send our folks to that's, it's above and beyond what we used to have to do. And so it's, it's just become more, more difficult. I mean, the, the whole process is a lot more difficult than it was two, three years ago.
Does the city pay for the training and the, uh, testing for the CDL?
Um, I thi, I, I think we do, uh, on those, on the new folks that have come in, I think we have. I'm not sure that we've like retroactively, if you come in with a CDL, we don't typically pay for that.
But if you come in with a CDL, you're.
You're at a higher, you're at a higher pay rate, for sure.
I like the idea of entry-level workers who, you know, if they're gonna work out.
And we, we are training those folks. I mean, we just, that program hasn't been around long enough for, I think, for us to know whether it's gonna be successful or not. I mean, we have hired more laborers since we did the pay plan, but it's still not enough. And then turnover is still a problem. There's just a lot of churn right now.
So if you hire someone, you train them, they get the CDL, they bump up in the pay scale.
Yep, right.
So, you know, I think the overarching message is just the, the challenge, the ongoing challenge we have hiring CDLs, whether we like it or not, it, it forces our hand in terms of what we can do in the way of a, a snow plowing response.
That out, how does that work from an insurance standpoint?
Assuming that we are dealing with contractors that are insured, we, we can get proof of insurance from them and they can name us as an additional insured. But it'd have to be, you know, someone that's already in that business, not just someone trying to pick it up on the side. And so far, we, we don't represent enough, uh, reliability and enough business form to, to really get much of a favorable response.
Yeah, and at this point, I mean, we've tried a few times, we've done RFPs to, to try and get contractors to do snow removal. Mostly, uh, I think, uh, in downtown parking lots, parking lot areas. Um, and we just have not seen any, and I'm not sure that we got any bids. And we've done, we've gone out two times and just that, that there's nobody out there that's willing to, to do it.
So based on this response, I see marginal receptivity to, um, dialing back as, as maybe we need to, as, as we're forced to. Um, so we'll, it will continue to, to look at kind of the thresholds of when we have, you know, when we go into residential streets, we'll continue to market in terms of getting the word out and, uh, about our staffing and our response times and try to reset the expectation a little bit.
I, I think thresholds, I mean, obviously you want to clean off your main streets from a safety standpoint versus a, uh, you know, a neighborhood street that you maybe are trying to clean off when you get X amount of snow from people getting, you know, stuck and stuff. So I mean, a two-inch snow, you're, you're doing Ohio and Ninth Street, whatever, and not doing the side streets.
We'll take a look at those thresholds again and, uh, report back. I, I have to commend the public works department in terms of how much time and effort they put into it, what they do in the way of messaging. And I think that helps, uh, demonstrate we're proactive to the extent that we can be and it helps set expectations, but.
And I think from their perspective, they don't want to, they don't want to back off. I mean, they want to provide the highest level of service that they can. It's a really hard conversation whenever we have it because they, they are, I mean, they're really proud of the work that they do and the, and the, and so for them to, to back off any at all, uh, or, you know, to be forced to back off because of staffing, that's really hard for them. So I, they do take a, a great deal of pride in the work that they do. And they do, I mean, you know, they've done a great job, even with the staffing numbers that we have.
When we have staffing numbers down, do we have a certain number of hours they can actually be on the street before they have to be off the street?
We're trying to schedule them in 12-hour blocks.
Generally what they do is as soon as they know a, a snowstorm is coming, they, they, um, rotate and they do two 12-hour shifts. So they may, so if they see something coming on Thursday and they know it's Tuesday now, they'll kind of ratchet back who's in the office during that first couple of days and then they'll just rotate out and work until.
So the same people that are out there putting down the free, the free storm, uh, material are the ones that'll be out there plowing also.
Right, yeah, oh yeah. And then parks employees also plow snow, but they're plowing in their facilities and, uh, with the limited, uh, staffing that they have.
The one question I have regarding this issue is are we subjecting the city to additional liability if we cut back on that service?
No, I, I don't think so. I mean, unless we just.
And I mean, it's not uncommon for cities to not touch residential streets at all. I mean, it's a, we, we didn't touch residential streets in Hays at all. I, I, generally the smaller cities do, they, they just do it all, but as the, the larger you get, the more street network you have, the harder it becomes to maintain it all. So, um, I don't have a poll of how many do and don't, but I'd say it's probably more common that they don't do residential streets, um, than it is that you do.
They didn't do it here for years. I don't know when it started doing all the residential streets, but, uh, how many times did trucks go out this year?
I don't know off the top of my head. Two or three, not very many. It was, it was a, yeah, it was a low, it was a low year. I, they may have salted more. They may have salted more than two or three, but they certainly didn't plow.
This last one, I know they salted and we got nothing.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it wasn't too many times. Um, the recyclables and SDR.
I'd like to go back up to the south substation. I had an idea after the fact that, uh, we already have a facility where we could put a south substation, the training center.
I just wonder if that's too far south, but, um, we can take a look at that.
Well, it's, it's far, you know, town is growing south.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'm just thinking a place where guys could go take their lunch, do their reports or, you know, we got the facility.
Uh, we can take a look at that. If, if we're headed that direction, we may take a look at Walmart, too. Um, but you, you see that in some instances.
Yeah, and there's plenty of real estate over there on Ninth Street. It's empty.
Um, that's certainly a conversation we can have with, with Chief Weiss and as we assess the, the department and the needs. Um, I think that one's probably a little bit more, um, forecasting going forward. Um, with everything they do in their, their vehicles, we'd have to size up how a substation would serve us. But we can take a look. Uh, and then the temple parking lot, I think you're aware that with the Starbahn proceeds, there's three things that were coming forward. Um, but two really shade structures in, in the, um, stage area to Ash and Santa Fe, the temple parking lot, and then kind of as a last-minute addition, we're taking a look at trying to have technology that's more user-friendly for changing the colors of the overhead structures. But I didn't, it didn't catch my attention that, that you were divided three to two on the temple parking lot upgrades. Other than it just serving as a community parking lot and them being a not-for-profit in need of help, it doesn't.
Off that question, sometimes you do things because the rules say you do it. Other times you do it because it's just the right, the right thing to do. I mean, we treat that parking lot like it's a city park. I know they have signs up and everything, but I mean, it's a parking lot that everybody counts on being there. I don't know what the cost of it is to resurface it.
But, and it is Starbahn proceeds, so I don't know if that, the intent would be Starbahn proceeds. I don't know if that makes a difference in terms of those funds were intended for, you know, downtown streetscape type improvement. Now, having said that, I don't know that we've, other than the car museum and some of the unique aspects of, uh, home with sweets in the alley in Old Chicago, we haven't just spent Starbahn proceeds on non-city right-of-way, but, um, uh, we, our intent was to get a number for you so we could bring it forward without creating a presumption, but just letting you know that, that it's in the conversation.
The temple did make a request. I mean, they, that's, they've requested for funding in the past and we've supported, uh, we supported them with funding for the roof replacement or repair. Um, so they did approach us a while back and that, I mean, that money that we have that's remaining in the downtown is really intended for, it's really parking lot money that we didn't spend. So, um, that's where we kind of looked at the temple as a, as a place where there is, it is public use. I mean, lots of people use that for parade turnarounds and for different events.
It's our unofficial overflow, it can handle anything parking lots structure.
And if we were to do it, I, I would expect there'd be an agreement that makes it very clear that it remains their property. It remains their ongoing maintenance responsibility.
I think the budgeted amount, uh, for that project was about between 180 and $200,000 to redo the whole parking lot. And that would include some streetscape type, I mean, kind of dressing it up a little bit so it matches with the rest of downtown.
I, I was okay with the roof because that was protecting the, the building. You know, I, I struggle a little bit with the parking lot. I haven't been in it, but I.
Would 200,000 get you a bathroom in a parking lot?
A one-hauler? It would get you a one, a one-hauler. And not looking for you to make a decision today, it really was just kind of an acknowledgement of something that was on the horizon and it got my attention as, as, uh, being a little divisive.
Provide, you know, services to theater salona, to the art facility. I mean, not that there's city properties per se, it's, it's, it's just a neighbor thing to do. I mean, that, that parking lot makes downtown very functional, functional for a, a lot of activities.
But so our intention going forward is to finalize the number, to get with the master developers because the master development agreement is what, uh, provides guidance on the use of the funds, confirm, uh, where they're at on it and then it will come back to you as a, as a request item in the very near future. So, um, you'll have the opportunity to deliberate and vote it up or down at that point.
I think everybody in here has probably parked there at least once and not gone into that building because we've been going someplace else.
Does the hospital use it? Before you use that at all?
They're not supposed to.
Yeah, we've been, it kicked off.
They retain the right to close parking lot at any time. You can close it during the River Festival. That used to be pretty popular place to park and walk over, but it was closed during the last.
You can close it during the River Festival. That used to be a pretty popular place to park and walk over, but it was closed during the last River Festival because they were having events in the, in the temple, so.
Well, if, if we were to.
One aspect of it.
Right. If, if we were to go forward, we could negotiate terms, things like that.
Mike, if, if you wanted update on the board or know what.
No, go ahead. I suppose so.
I believe the plans by the board and by Mary would be if it's funded that in conjunction with the new arts and entertainment district and the special event permitting that Lawrence Department has initiated, that the temple would be part of that, uh, cycle and circle. And so, um, they would be both approving and/or acknowledging what they have booked and what the city would prioritize. And either as the governing body or in conjunction with, uh, with Lawrence Department, we might pre-identify some parades, some annual events and other times that, that that parking lot would need to be used and select those out, much like the agreements that you've made with the, uh, the license agreement at Campbell Plaza. Uh, so I, they are aware that it would make that parking lot more formally vulnerable for city needs as those were declared, especially in conjunction with special events. And I do think last year was a, a large wedding that was booked on festival weekend that closed the lot one day, but then it was back open, so.
Any other topics on that list that you'd like to take up? Sorry. Any other topics on that list that you'd like to take up? Okay. The second tier and third tier are more stratification based on yes and no's and, and scoring. And don't necessarily intend to walk you through every one of those, but some of the highlights there, the co-responders program, which is just getting off the ground. I, I think the presumption is general receptivity to that. Some of these things we're going to have to work through from a budgeting standpoint. And the others we're going to have to prioritize as we look at the capacity of, of various departments and what it means for them.
Need to happen anyway, things that you would do just in the routine course of trying to get better at what you do. And don't necessarily need our blessing to say it's a priority.
Yeah, and I guess part of the reason, well, staff at a department level really wanted an opportunity to do strategic planning. As we brainstormed, this is the level that they were planning to. And the other, other reason that we included it was to give you a sense of what's on each department's plate relative to their capacity to take on new and big projects.
Is there something that staff feels is a major priority but hasn't received funding or support so far from us? Or been, been presented to us that we need to leapfrog to the top of the list?
Um, I tried to highlight all those in that discussion topics tab. So when we get into that, there, those are the things that stood out as, um, needing conversation one way or the other. Whether it's needing consensus from the governing body or feeling like there need to be more conversation because there might not be support for something we need to take up. So I, I guess my intention would be as we put the strategic plan together to acknowledge, uh, the focus on where there was consensus, uh, as being the highest priorities coming from you as the city commission. Acknowledge, um, some of the things we talked about in terms of the reservations and then the rest of these sort them out as consensus exists, um, provided that capacity exists in each department.
You have a good example. Next, uh, left salona stage shade structure at the very bottom. Is, I'm personally in favor of them, but is that something that staff would be working on now anyway? Or do you need a formal word from us if we want you to do this?
Well, actually, that was one of three in that Starbahn list of, um, controls for the overhead lighting, the, um, temple parking and that. And your feedback divided them up just a little bit, but we, our intention would be to bring all three of those back to you at the same time. And there, we're working that through. Um, in, in part, I guess I, we included in this conversation because if you had feedback to the contrary, we might as well know that now. And again, these are, I view these as you have consensus on them. There, there's, you know, a little bit of neutrality there and a little bit of variance in terms of priority, but, um.
Put in landscaping where we don't have it or upgrade what we.
Uh, probably, my thinking primarily upgrade what we have, try to refresh.
That's nice.
Yes.
That up pretty good, but I can't. I need to write down.
Uh, yeah, the, the landscaping itself and then the paving bricks staining them were two improvements that we offered up as, you know, aesthetic improvements on the Ninth Street corridor. But my takeaway from the feedback was it may not be as high a priority as, as I might have thought.
Back up there to, uh, staffing fire trucks with four people. And then additional staffing to offset overtime. We did that. How many, how many positions would that be looking at?
Yeah, there, there's two things going on there. I think the, the lower hanging fruit of the two, if we can do the analysis on the front end and do the performance monitoring on the back end, is try to bring staff on board to offset overtime. Um, right now we've got mandatory holdovers that are impacting firefighters. And I, I think Chief Snyder is, is up to the task. We've had conversations in terms of, you know, what level of analysis we need to make that decision. I think you've got a little bit of mandatory holdover. You've got some vacation impacts and, and sick leave impacts. And then you've got some overtime that's going to be unavoidable. It won't eliminate it. So part of our analysis is going to be getting comfortable with, um, you know, how much offset there will be and trying to verify that it essentially pays for itself. Right.
So my question is, is overtime an issue?
Overtime is an issue. So last year, 19,088 hours, um, eight, I'm sorry, 18,088 overtime hours, not counting what is scheduled in our, in their regular shifts. So when you look at that and break that down and certainly account for pay and benefits, um, we came out, I forget the exact figure, but I believe it was two-point-something persons per shift. So the problem is we have a, a city policy that mandates you must use a certain amount of your annual vacation in that given year. The problem with us is we have an internal policy that limits the amount of vacation because of overtime creation and forced overtime. So that's just additional resources to, to stem the overtime issue. We have training that are mandated, training sessions that are mandated. Our hands are in 10 different directions for different things with TRT and hazmat and EMS training. We are so forced right now to go external at times. All of our training classes, um, are overtime paid now for the instructors. There is a lot of overtime. I mean, I think last year we were just about a million dollars in overtime. That's not even addressing the four-person per apparatus. That's a whole separate issue of proper staffing to make sure we're protecting life and property. So they're, they do work together. I have some ideas on how to alleviate some of that, but there are no guarantees. Any fire department in this country has overtime, whether it's set on their schedule or it's going to be generated by training, by vacations, by sick, by injured. Can we reduce it? Absolutely. It, it takes absolute monitoring to see where we're.
I think you're, I mean, your point about that, that firefighters do like the overtime, that certainly does ring true. And I think even if we added additional staff to try and offset that overtime, those folks that really want overtime are still going to be able to get as much as, as much as they want. I mean, there's enough, there's enough of that play with vacation and all that, that there would still be a, a certain amount of overtime. And I mean, we do have certain individuals that work as much as they can and, and they would still be able to do that. I mean, I don't, I don't think you'll see.
Eliminate all the overtime, but I think we, our staffing levels and our scheduling right now are creating overtime that we could minimize.
Where, where I come from, uh, it was cheaper to have people, make people work overtime than hiring.
The, the challenge we run into is almost on a daily basis. We have to force people to stay. We will put out a request for people to volunteer to work overtime shifts and more times than not, we don't get them. So we actually have a, a procedure and policy in place that it's forced overtime. So you have to call, you know, at seven o'clock in the morning, you're calling your wife and, and her husband and saying, or, you know, I'm not going to be home, they forced me to work. And unfortunately, that is not a good thing from the physical health perspective of the fire service as well as the mental health perspective as well, as well as family life. And I know each of you has heard me speak about how important our families are. So there, there are issues that I'm trying to work with. Um, there are opportunities and challenges as well.
Do we have any, uh, extra people, rovers on duty?
No, sir.
So part of this on the front end is going to be the analysis to verify what we think is possible in terms of overtime savings in comparison to the wages. Financially, we'd like to verify that. The, just from a scheduling standpoint, we need to hit a, a, a healthy balance. And then the, the rest of the conversation is going to be, what's that implementation going to look like? And what's the performance monitoring going to be once we implement to verify that it's working as we anticipated? If we can, if we can break even, it helps the department, it helps the individual firefighters. If we can save money, all the better. Um, the police department made a shift to four tens and made a noticeable impact on, on overtime. Their staffing levels limit their ability to, to schedule like that. But when they kind of took a hard look at overtime and looked at scheduling alternatives, they were able to make significant progress. Thanks. So again, I'm not looking to read all these line items to you, but there's a breadth of items that are essentially, uh, four and, and one neutral that, um, are spread across various topics. Um, the third tier is, still has, has four and intermittently has a no in there. So that might merit some, a review and, and if, if you have concerns, uh, please feel free to share them. But Jerry Ivy Pond and Water feature, um, we're proceeding with designing and filling the pond and, and working on design for something in the alternative. Um, so we're proceeding as if that was, uh, the prior direction provided. Uh, but there is someone that indicated a, a no in that regard. Special populations programming, um, we talked about that earlier, just our staffing challenges there. Or Fire Station Number Four transitioning to a building and facility shop for Parks and Rec. Um, that's kind of in our intent, that's at least in the conversation. We'll need to get through Fire Station Number Four first, but intention is probably to retain that building and, and utilize it for the organization somehow. Legal review of property maintenance code, that was the conversation about, uh, taking a hard look at just how aggressive we could be legally. Um, it might, in talking with Greg, it probably is surrounds the, creating a presumption of, um, the law supporting aesthetics, supporting property values, trying to proactively build the, the ordinances in such a way that the person that's cited is, is tasked with refuting that, uh, but we've got to balance that with case law. Paperless billing, just from a staff standpoint, it would, uh, help immensely. I, I think that's part of our implementation of water billing software. Um, but again, there was some concern raised there. Uh, kiosk at municipal court, standardizing the River Festival cost accounting, uh, didn't have no's, but had, had four and one no response. Logistics chief or, um, battalion chief level, park master planning, that, that's a discussion in and of itself, but, um, the Broadway meetings, medians expediting their completion. Uh, that is, if that's something that we want to take up, that is a sizable budget shift. Um, and I guess I would like to pause there. Is that something that you as a group would like staff to pursue? Because if we, if that's the case, we need to step up our designing and, and putting that out to bid and, and identify funding to go with it.
Is that the medians between Crawford and?
Yeah, it's actually north of Crawford down to the, to, uh, Ninth Street essentially.
We talked about that, I guess, a little bit. I can't upgrade, update us on what we were going to do and.
Yeah, well, Public, Public Works broke them into phases and came forward with a plan of what to, to keep and what to, to remove. But they've broken it into like a three or four-year timeframe. Um, and it would be a sizable undertaking, but they partly did that because of finances. If we said that was a priority that we either wanted to, you know, fund upfront and pay off overtime or we wanted to spend out of reserves, we could put that out as one big project.
Side of what C has.
Yeah, I think, I think Public Works dialed in on, on a proposed design. With each one of those medians, each one of those intersections, they came up with essentially removing everything they could, uh, but keeping what needed to be there for traffic control. And we, they have a plan. We can certainly, you know, run that back by you. I've, the broader question is whether you, you want to chip away at it, you know, a, a year at a time over the next three years or so? Or whether you want to, uh, put the funding into making that one big project, trying to expedite it?
Cheaper to develop, do it all at once?
Hmm, depends on inflation and petroleum prices. Um, it, I, the reason the Public Works did it is they were rolling it into their annual budget. If you, if we said we wanted to expedite it, we'd have to either find a way to finance it over time or, and we could do it on a short duration, or we'd need to spend out of reserves.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if that, if the medians also placed, I don't know if we put it on a schedule where we're replacing the street or doing street work at the same time we're doing the medians. I'm not sure.
I think it's just, my understanding is.
I can't remember.
What was the dollar amount on that?
Oh, I don't think it was more than four or $500,000 total for the whole thing, but I don't.
Yeah, and crumbling curves. I, I just, maybe it's one of my personal pet peeves, but aesthetically, it just.
Is there street work scheduled?
I, we've done street work around those bands for years. The roadway and some of the stormswimmer improvements have taken place. We've just continued.
I mean, there's a plan. I think we could just expand what we're doing. I think we have a, I mean, there's a plan to do some this year. It's already bid and I think approved. Um, we can expand that plan.
That I don't think we approved it over a three or four-year period, just approved the plan.
Yeah, and then start annually and just put the plan together.
We didn't propose to you to do it as one big project. We broke it apart because, because of the extent of it and the cost of it. But as we talk about, you know, having some funds available and having some financial flexibility, that's why I put it back into the conversation. So what I'm seeing by just the way of the responses is a receptivity to that and we, we can staff that through and, and bring that forward.
Is that technically considered an entry corridor?
Yeah, we, our comprehensive plan calls it a impact street, I believe. So yeah, we're, we're supposed to have a higher aesthetic standard for it.
It's, it just seems like it'd be in our better interest to, to prioritize that.
The, the Broadway's north now is, I mean, we've got, of course, that's a whole different deal, but.
It was well received.
Positive, uh, feedback on that when we, when we did that. That's thanks to staff.
The other thing I would call to your attention is, uh, we talked about some of the court, uh, programs and they kind of got divided a little bit, but court has indicated treatment programs and anger management or other, uh, programs that they assign to defendants and they have to do it at their own expense and that can be a challenge for them. So they, they thought there was value in, uh, trying to find a way to make that available, um, to them. So, and again, there's general consensus, just a little bit, um, an outlier there. And I'll pause if you're, there's anything else you want to take. And I'll pause if you're, there's anything else you want to take up on that list. Okay. Um, and then I've identified a laundry list of discussion topics in the next tab. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, we are on the third tier discussion topics. So I went through the entire list and, and identified talking points that I felt like we needed to take up. I think we got homelessness. At least a, a first step going forward. Childcare is a whole nother kettle of fish. Uh, there's general support that we need to take it up in some way. I would equate it to the homelessness topic that it's not necessarily ours to lead, but, um, it's a community conversation. There is, I, I think we shared with you previously. There's been some community conversation being led by the chamber and, uh, United Way. I think their, well, what they've rolled out is their approach is an endowment approach of trying to raise 10 to 15 million dollars of endowment funds to, um, spin off revenue to subsidize wages. Uh, there's been quite a bit of conversation, there, there was conversation at meeting that I was at about their fee structure and whether they have graduated rates and whether they've increased their rates and, but it certainly is in the community conversation as an impactor of economic development, employers being able to get employees, just to overall community need. We, uh, one alternative is we hang back and let the chamber and the United Way proceed down the path that they, they're proposing. I think there's some concern whether that's going to be successful and some concern about whether there needs to be a broader conversation about other providers, um, everything from school districts role to um, encouraging graduate rates and income qualified rates and. So I, I find myself in those conversations. I, I don't, it, it's not something any of our departments, any of our organization addresses currently, but it certainly rolls into the housing conversation and the economic development conversation.
And my thought is the city doesn't need to be in the childcare business. You know, the, I can see the United Way getting involved in the chamber to support businesses, but, uh, I think they need to work that out.
Our country is in the world where the government does regulate childcare.
Well, a lot of folks.
Regulation and providing is two different things.
I'm sorry, providing.
Yeah. The legislature, uh, I think the bill got signed to lighten up on the regulations, cause that's why a lot of people got out of it. It's because it's so hard to comply with all the red tape.
Then our efforts should be in helping people comply. But when I see cheapening standards because it's easier, I mean, that's, you know, what was the point of having a standard? You know, like, like for school education. Well, oh, all these kids are educated because we've lowered the standards. So what if, so the high school diploma doesn't mean anything if you lower it too low. You know, the idea is that childcare is a springboard to doing well in school and personal development. You know, they, it costs money. And, you know, I'd rather, you know, you set the rate, you see what it costs, you set the rate, you subsidize the people who have to pay for it. But there is a minimum rate that you just can't go below and provide good childcare.
So let, let me throw this out. I think I mentioned it the last time that we met. What, what is your receptivity to providing some funding to have a strategic assessment of our childcare needs and possible solutions specific to Salina? I don't know if a consultant, I don't, I haven't identified one that, that does that type of work, but as the county's been, being asked for funding to go towards this, um, it just strikes me as before we start down a path and.
Is it childcare aware? There, there's a organization.
There's childcare aware, uh, which is, it was, is based out of Salina. They have some, some demographic information about income levels and availability of childcare slots and, and, uh, wage rates, that type of thing. And, but I think it's I think that data needs to be confirmed, but I think the rest of that conversation is how do you address the, the identified need, whether it's through subsidized wages, whether there's another model, um.
In my opinion, it's a topic on everybody's conversation, uh, the topic on everybody's minds. I think it's time to have a community conversation. I personally think that the school board ought to lead that conversation, but maybe we can facilitate school board, county, city, uh, having that conversation. I think it's a great place to start to, to get some kind of input. So we can forge a plan for it. But, uh, I really think just as at a community level, we're more likely to get more done than from any other source. But if we're going to have any, uh, input, we got to think about being committed to it in a way, all these different organizations need to be committed with the mill levy. So I think to me, it's something, a community conversation ought to result in something on the ballot. It's to see if everybody wants to contribute this. I, I couldn't make that decision as an elected without knowing that from the public. But if the public was behind that support, I could see the school system, the city, the county all putting in a mill or so and to go towards a plan if we had a vision of how we could solve this problem. And personally, I think if there was a public entity that was, uh, charged with providing childcare, then you'd have that entity could, could provide the sliding rates you need to those that need assistance and without jeopardizing all of the people that are in private practice with that kind of thing. But I'm not a professional in this. My kids are all grown, but I think it's going to take uh, community will to, to solve that problem. And that's going to go back to the taxpayers willingness to contribute to it. We have community colleges that people, communities finance. Uh, uh, there's any number of special ways that communities try to attract problems. And I honestly think that, uh, we've all got these same problems. The ones that are going to grow are the ones that solve the problems. So maybe prior there wasn't an opportunity to have a community conversation about it, but now might be the time.
I'm gonna, Mike, did you attend a meeting? I know there was a childcare meeting that happened since last, what, 30, 45 days?
Yeah, that, that's one I was describing that the, it was the chamber in United Way that led that presentation. Um, in fact, I think I forwarded a copy of the PowerPoint that they presented. Um, but that, that model is the endowment, raise funds, uh, locally, um, to, to fund, um, subsidize wages and.
And I know pre, pre-COVID, uh, Commissioner Davis and I attended a, a meeting in Garden City on this, uh, subject and and, and I, I believe Commissioner Ryan is kind of right. There's a, there's a a difference between what workers need to be paid and what they can afford to be paid. And so, yeah, is that a, is that something the taxpayer is going to help with? Is that something the employers are going to help with? But I do believe there needs to be a, maybe a a community meeting about that. So, and I, and I think you're 100% correct as we look to bring workers into our, our community, housing's one, we're trying to address that and the other is childcare. And I think you're, you're exactly right. I don't know the answer, but if you can be ahead of the curve on that, you're going to get more workers near your community.
Well, I think the, an easy first step is invite the chamber and, and United Way to make, into a study session to make the same.
And I would also invite a line of childcare, you know.
Let's get the county and school board into the conversation. To me, the, uh, well, the school board has all of the expertise in this because they, they're the ones that stand. I mean, they've got to assess these children for readiness and then they're responsible to them at the backend. So it seems crazy to me that, that we built streets and have all kinds of codes and requirements for the streets and yet in, in preparing our children, we dropped the ball the first three or four years and the street doesn't start until they're four or five years old. So, uh, if the community has a willingness to solve that problem, I, I think, you know, let's pick this child up from the beginning and carry him through instead of letting him walk a dirt road till they get to the baby.
When, when we started talking about having community conversations, uh, childcare, we, we came out of homelessness and my thought was childcare is likely the next topic. Um, we could certainly do that. As a starting point. Okay. Yeah. If, if there were need for resources, I'm jumping ahead a bit, any receptivity to uh, using some of our financial resources for a specified childcare related purpose.
Certainly support.
Tell me an amount.
Getting, getting the conversation started. You know, some of the help may come from the state, some may, you know, private industry may put in money to subsidize their own employees expenses.
I, I would think we could get the county and the school board to assist us or go in with us on assessing the problem and a solution. If that's, you know, you're talking about getting outside expertise, then, uh, certainly we could fund that, facilitate that.
I think we already know what the problem is. It's not complicated that the wages for childcare workers is not competitive with with anything really.
Any other job in, in the city.
And, uh, you know, a big issue is with private childcare. Newborn care. Or I don't know what the under one. The childcare provider can only take so many babies and then so many other kids. So no one wants babies. That's the root of the problem is, is the wages and, you know, if it if it started out paying $60,000 a year, you'd have everyone lining up to get their childcare license.
No, you would, I would. It wouldn't be everybody. That's too hard to work now, but yeah.
So you wouldn't make it in there.
Yeah, that's right.
But you know, licensing, the childcare provider education, you know, tho- those are areas where governments can help, you know. Uh, you set up the edu- our, our educational, uh, facilities can, can help provide some of that education. I mean, it, it's a lot, but, but, uh, Commissioner Lombard's right, you know, to pay for what you would want in an ideal situation. You'd probably have to, God knows what the starting wage would be, but, but the profit margin for the owner operator is so small now or a negative number that they can't do it.
Right.
And that, the, the conver- the conversation that's come up repeatedly and I completely understand it, I'm not criticizing it, is childcare workers need to be paid more and childcare needs to cost less. And those are, those are diametrically opposed. And so I guess with your permission, what I would like to be able to do is go to the, the county and the school and say, we'd like to have a community conversation, some, we'll set it up similar to the homelessness forum and we'd invite the chamber and, and, uh, United Way as well and, and childcare aware. And then also indicate a willingness for us to cost share in some resources to help with an assessment and putting together a plan.
I think one thing in Garden City, they realized, you know, there are ways you can save money, you know, on, on meals for kids and licensing and education, but you can't make paying the childcare workers less the mainstay of your reducing costs.
Right.
And considering most of these folks don't get insurance, you know, uh, you know, Medicaid in Kansas, I don't know why it's stuck where it is, but you know, simple thing, economic development incentive, you know, childcare workers are qualified for Medicaid. You know, that's three or four dollars an hour, an employer would not have to pay to provide health insurance benefits. And be surprised, once you throw in health benefits, people will take a little less, uh, per hour if they know they're getting health insurance, uh, with it. But a lot of ways that, you know, the wage can be supported.
The Garden City mo- model was compelling to me, but I don't know that they've been able to implement it. There are other examples out there of other communities and other daycare providers that have said they changed their rate structure to, to have a graduated structure based on infant to older and, and they've indicated it works. Um, those are the kind of things that I see as someone trying to facilitate as a local conversation, local model possibly. So I didn't, I didn't see any absolute no's. I saw a few subtle head nods, yes, in, in that proposed approach. So I'm going to proceed in that direction unless you tell me otherwise. Um, and we are at a stopping point for the citizen forum time slot and lunch.
Yes, chief, you're it. You can be, you, you can be a civilian for 15 minutes.
Take your jacket off.
You want to try it one more and then go to lunch?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we talked about it before, but the, the county had a conversation with, well, county administrator and, and deputy county administrator had a conversation with Jacob and me. Just kind of brainstorming what they're up against in, in terms of space needs. I indicated a general receptivity to trying to work with them. I think they're, they're still trying to size up uh, the entirety of their needs and available space. Part of that conversation turned to us in terms of our expectations for the city county building, Memorial Hall. Um, so I guess question number one is our receptivity to participating with the county in a needs assessment. Well, a space assessment, I guess would be a good way to describe it. Identifying needs, identifying available space and trying to think through, um, the availability and reuse of those spaces.
I, I know the county has needs because of the court stuff. Where do we stand? Do we have a need? Are we okay where we're at?
Well, we certainly have a need and, and the police side or an interest in the police side of expanding into, um, the sheriff's portion of the law enforcement center. We have, our conversation about need in the building, my thinking has been as we expand, we might jettison departments to offsite locations, whether that's utilities, parks. Rather than expand the city county building, try to factor that into their future plans. Um, Memorial Hall is is the, the big unknown for us. We've had that building and, and it just let, let it sit for a long time. I don't know that we have an intention to reuse it, but I think we're getting to the point of we need to make an educated decision about what our long-term intention for Memorial Hall is.
I don't have a problem with a- any of that. I mean, I think the better we interface with the county, the better it is for the citizens and the taxpayers. So I'm all for the collaborating on that.
You know, everybody likes to be under one roof, but as the city and county expand, if city county building doesn't hold at all, do you, does city and county send like organizations, departments to an offsite location? I'm, I'm guessing there's a lot of business that gets conducted just by walking up and down the second floor hallway, which.
Yeah, there is, you know, there.
Planning and.
Development services.
With more media, the better your communications, your computers are all hooked together. It means less and less to be in the same hallway anymore.
Right. Have, have we considered city and/or the county moving in using Memorial Hall as the.
Well, the, at the staff level, that's been part of the conversation is what, what is the condition of Memorial Hall? How realistic is it to redevelop it, especially in light of the gym space right in the center of the building and how you redevelop that? I'm sorry.
You could build a building inside the building.
Well, I, I think, you know, that, that space assessment could very well be an, an assessment of the condition of Memorial Hall, the, the cost of redevelopment. You, I think you're going to end up with a price tag for redevelopment that may be sizable, but it's going to be a value proposition of you're using an existing building and maximizing it, or are we ready to, to tear it down? The other space challenge that I think is part of that study is parking. And Memorial Hall's a good sized building, looks great from the outside, even if it can be redeveloped. It has little to no parking associated with it. Um, but that, now you're starting to potentially have a campus type of, of approach to, uh, the downtown area.
Would there be any private interest in Memorial Hall? That kind of.
Would there be any private interest in Memorial Hall? That kind of rehearsal go.
Right.
Just kind of thrown out there.
Well. Yes and no. Um, we, what efforts we made were just to kind of be vocal about the fact that if someone had a redevelopment plan, we'd entertain it. That sparked some, uh, I think it was Hutton in both cases.
Yeah.
To look at it from redevelopment as multifamily, that's when they identified the, the interior gym space was a challenge that you couldn't just infill that with, with apartments. Then the conversation turned to an esports arena. We entered into a resolution of intent with them, essentially said we'd impose a moratorium on entertaining other uh, redevelopment interest to give them an opportunity to size that up, and then I'll
Yeah, I mean, that, and that resolution has since expired and they, I mean, they're, I think they still have it kind of as of, you know, there's a back burner plan that they have looked at, at for esports, um, hasn't had a whole lot of traction uh, for some time. So I, I, I think there could be an outside possibility that something that, that comes back. Um, but we haven't had any, of course, we haven't, we haven't tried to get interest, but we haven't had anybody knocking on our door saying, hey, we want to do something with the facility. So
And, you know, when we talked about the housing RFP, we mentioned that the more typical approach is you own a building, you're owning a piece of ground, and you solicit redevelopment proposals. Memorial Hall would be an example of that where if we wanted to, we could solicit redevelopment proposals. I think the county would like an opportunity to, to assess it and see if it suits their needs at all. I think if we did some type of review of the building and, and assessed its viability for redevelopment, that could help in either instance, whether it's the county or whether it's soliciting RFPs from someone to, to redevelop it. So i- if there's a willingness to spend a little bit of money and, and put in some time and energy, uh, I think it's kind of too full. We can, um, try to take a broader look at, at space needs, and then we can also take a focused look at, at Memorial Hall.
I think that's a good idea.
My thought is that if we need to do something, otherwise we're gonna end up with another St. John's Hospital. The dilapidated building.
Is there a chance, I've been through part of that, is there a chance we could have a tour of the Memorial Hall?
Sure.
Thirty, you know.
You know, and I, I was thinking, you know, with stuff going on at Field House, there seems to always be a shortage of basketball courts. There's a lot of basketballs played in that building. I guess there's still a basketball court there.
And it's been used for gymnastics.
There's, there's
Still hardwood floors.
There is, yeah. But gymnastics really didn't take place down, they had, they had a little bit of both. They had a weird area up above.
Stage area.
Where they had some stuff, so they did a little bit of both. It's kind of strange. They did it on the Yeah, they did, they did it both places, but they had a weird, they had a kind of a weird up in the stadium area above where Solina.
And down there, is that where the, uh, symphony is and then also?
They were up in the upper floors.
Yeah, upstairs, and downstairs was like
Arts and craft.
Weightlifting, there was all kinds of weird little programs in the basement.
And there was a sub-basement.
The municipal band was not happy about getting booted out of it.
We tried to coordinate with them, eh, it, it just turns into a maintenance, you know, a, a oversized maintenance responsibility for minimal use. Um, we are kind of mothballing it and it will go nowhere unless we, we come up with a plan.
Well, you, you talked about taking it down and I think you get a lot of negative feedback all that.
Eh, eh, you know, it's well-preserved on the exterior. Um, it's a good-looking building. So what I'm hearing is receptivity to collaborating with the county at the, an expense to do a space assessment and receptivity to, um, at least investigating Memorial Hall, the, the redevelopability, if that's a word, of Memorial Hall and a desire to take a tour as a, as a quick add-on to a study session.
The chance of county offices that are relocated off the island, so to speak, that they would continue to use those spaces.
Uh, use which spaces? I'm sorry.
The different county offices that have moved out for the remodel. Is there a chance that they're gonna stay offsite?
I think it could be, the county's trying to fill, figure out how to move those chess pieces around and they, my understanding is they've got some in temporary locations while they're trying to figure out this broader plan to try to find a space to, to put them in. Um, in fact, eh, you know, one of the questions they put to me was our interest in the sheriff's office space of the law enforcement center. I indicated we have an interest in that, but they followed up with could you accommodate community corrections in part of that space while we're still trying to figure out the long-term plan for this. So I, I think they're, the, they may have some pieces locked in, but they're very much in flux and that's why they want to do this broader assessment. I mean, Jacob, do you have any additional?
Yeah, I think that's right. I don't think there's a, I mean, I think there's a chance that some of them could stay offsite, but some of those folks were working, I mean, I think community corrections for the most part just went to working from home, a lot of, a lot of those folks. So I, I don't think that's a long-term solution for them, and I think that's why they're moving into the law enforcement center, once the, once the sheriff's department leaves. But there's, there's definitely, the county needs space and they're trying to figure out how to accommodate that. And I, I don't know, it's kind of a strange conversation because we don't really need a lot of space. I mean, as we've said, we've talked about things like, you know, if we did need to expand, we have departments, we, we could move water customer accounting to a strip mall somewhere in town and people could pay their water bills there. That's a common practice for, I mean, the tag office has an office down that, you know, like behind McDonald's on Ninth Street. So you could do something like that. So for us, we haven't really been, we've been kind of brought into the conversation a little bit in the last couple of months, but it's not really our, right now, it's not really our problem, it's the county's problem. And so, I mean, we can maybe be part of the solution, but how much is that gonna cost us? I mean, that's how you have to
And part of what's forcing the county's hand is eh, all the services of court gravitating together. The added, um, judges and the district attorneys and the prosecutors and, and their need to be in proximity to each other, which then impacts the other uses of the building and is causing them to have to look offsite.
Well, and, and expansion, I mean, they've also talked about expanding the city-county building and kind of on the third floor, making a forty or fifty foot expansion. Has been something that's been discussed, but I don't, I mean, at this point, nothing really has any legs, and I think doing the space needs kind of study would tell us what, and, and part of that would be taking a look internally for the city and saying, okay, what is it that we need? Do we need space to expand? I mean, right now, we've had lots of conversations about development services, and if they're gonna take on a bigger role in doing code enforcement, does that mean a couple more people? And a couple more people aren't gonna fit across the hall. I mean, they're starting to get to where they may need more people. Um, so it just depends.
Okay, well, I won't restate it, but I kind of gave you a summary. My sense was we were on the same page there, so we'll head in that direction. And it is straight up noon.
We'll be back here at five, Mike.
I think we could eh, we, we need to be here at one four, we need to be here at one forty-five for citizen comment.
Right, I mean, do we be back here in, in the media at twelve thirty? Can we take thirty minute lunch?
I think you could take a longer lunch than that if you wanted to. I think we're getting close to having it wrapped up. Come back at twelve forty-five.
Ready to get started.
Alright. Down to a handful of things. Um, picking up where we left off, we talked a little bit about boards and commission review and, and you indicated some individual subsets of that as being priorities, taking a look at, at the guidelines, that type of thing. But I guess the question I want to put to you is your receptivity to downsizing membership of boards and commissions and possibly eliminating boards and commissions.
I'm open to both. I, I think some of them are larger than they need to be. Could review the membership composition. Some of them have extremely hard time getting someone from the boundary area of the city, uh, limits, you know, they're two hour, two I think it's a two-mile boundary area. Is it three? Whatever it is, uh, particularly the planning commission has a lot of trouble with that. Uh, and I think they should be, uh, citizens of Salina, I don't know where
I was gonna bring that up too.
On the, on the zoning because of the three miles, is that required because of our
Yeah, it's the extra, I think it's the urban service area, um, so that, some of that is, is statutory from the county side. But the res- the other residency, I'm not aware of it really being an issue one way or the other until recently, and then I'd just presumably, I'd find something in the way of residency and didn't. So there's not, eh, other than that one county planning commission item, I think it'd be completely within our purview to do that. And one of you, eh, eh, your feedback was, um, have the residency requirement be in the Saline County rather than just the city limits. But it could go either way.
Eh, and some of the boards, I mean, it really depends on how the board was set up and whether there's a statutory requirement for that board. And I mean, so some boards say it has to be a specific member or specific, so like tourism convention board has to have somebody that's a hotelier and somebody who's a restaurateur and somebody that meets those kind of criteria. So some of the boards have a specific makeup of who needs to be on the board and then some are kind of more general. So I think like, eh, like our parks advisory board, I don't think has, it's more general. So you could expand that or contract it or do what you want.
So we, we could certainly start with an inventory of what's required compared to, you know, what our current makeup is and and board by board, go through eh, the numbers and then see if we can either consolidate or do away with some boards as well.
That'd be a good idea. The other thing is, when we get applications, are are they only good for so long and do the individuals know that? Because to me, if somebody's applied for a board and it's three years later and, and we select them, that's embarrassing when they say, well, I'm no longer interested or, or what, so.
I think there could be better management of those applications, because I've been aware of people that applied in paper, applied online, and maybe it did get there, maybe it didn't get there, and, uh,
I think we'll have some capability with the website and with agenda management software to upgrade how we manage that. And we, that's something we certainly can look at, how we do the timeframes and the, the ability to apply online and whether they fall off or, a- and I think there's some, there's some opportunity maybe there to look at it, I don't think we have in the past where we can say, okay, somebody's applied for a board, they didn't necessarily apply for the board that's open, we can contact them and say, hey, would you be interested in this other board? Uh, you've shown some interest uh, or, you know, kind of that sort of thing. I think there's some opportunities for us to maybe think about expanding how we
And I think on the, on the application, they have the ability to apply for more than one.
They do, yeah.
And you might want to make it mandatory that the application's not accepted if they don't fill out the paragraph, why I want to be on this board.
It's a good point.
I mean, to see that blank, you know, the rest of the application is one word, one word, one word, and there's nothing there. It's like, okay, that's file thirteen. Um, I mean, you know, make up some reason why you want to be on a, on this board, yeah.
So while we're on that topic, what about attendance tracking and those of you that have served as mayor, I think probably all of you have found yourself in this situation, having to reach out to somebody and put them on a, a improvement plan. And I, I think attendance gets pretty bad before we even do that.
I was gonna say, I think criteria, the bar's not set very high at this point. Is it like, if you've missed fifty percent, then you get dinged? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I think it's fifty percent.
Some boards meet differently, did some, I mean, so, but I do believe that attendance, there needs to be some kind of attendance. I know I signed a letter yesterday, I believe.
So eh, are you, in your mayoral roles, are you comfortable doing that, or do you want that to be an administrative automatic?
Well, I guess since we technically make the appointment, we probably should be the one to
Okay, I, I respect that, I just I mean, put you on the spot.
We gladly give you the job, but, but, yeah, we, we probably should be the one.
Miss fifty percent and then, and then
Then you put them on a plane.
Goes off and we can decide, or we reprimand, right? Do we, we say something about it? Wouldn't be any point to keep them beyond that if they continue to be absent.
A simple, you know, maybe they weren't getting notification of the meeting. I mean, they, they maybe a reason or they they've had two surgeries right before the, so it's worthwhile to contact them, but I think the folks that we've removed probably haven't even been able to be contacted to let them know that they weren't showing up at the meetings. And so far, we know they may have moved out of town.
And then bylaws is more a staff task, and that's been on the punch list for a while, but it's it has a lot of merit and it represents a lot of work, but I think as we tackle boards and commissions, we'll take up reviewing all the various bylaws, synchronizing them and trying to standardize them as much as we can. Again, some of them have specifics, whether it's the planning commission, the, uh, board of zoning appeals, that type of thing.
Most of them don't have bylaws. I mean, most of the boards have, they kind of follow the standard resolution of what a board and commission is, but there are some that have specific dependent on their statutory requirements.
Are we documenting that each board member has gone to orientation and I don't know, they haven't passed a test or however it's
Yeah, we are. So there's a, there's an orientation packet that includes the, the resolution, the boards and commissions resolution, which has all the rules of procedure and it has, um, then there's a, a document about, uh, open meetings and open records, and then there's a document, uh, ethics policy. And then, so each board administrator, um, conducts training usually in the fall, September, October timeframe, because that's when the, the majority of board members are put in place in the fall. Um, and so we conduct those trainings and we require board members to sign off saying if they received these documents and, and we require that every year. And so the board administrators, um, manage those, um, those forms, and I think the city clerk also has a copy of those as well.
It's a solid waste committee, uh, it's a pretty large committee. Is that statutory or they require?
Uh, there certainly are some statutory requirements. I don't know exactly. I don't know if we've expanded them or, but it's generally, those are a large, they're, they're a board with, generally they have specific requirements about who's on it. I mean, like somebody from the, like that, they're supposed to have somebody from the county, somebody from each individual city in the county that's appointed by the mayor of those individual cities, which is where we really fall short. And then, um, and then there's some at-large. So it's a, I think it is prescribed in state law how those are set out.
Well, that one seems particularly unwieldy and again, it's the lack of participation. I basically see how many people are actually active on it. It always kind of shocks me, but there also needs to be enough representation from the city that we are overwhelmed by the statutory requirements.
Well, you may recall
For improvement there, but, uh,
Yeah, it's, it's certainly something we can review, review. I mean, so some of those are, they may be set out in statute and then our ordinance could be, could require more. So I, I mean, I think part of that review would be looking at the membership and going, okay, what is required by statute? And then what is, what do we think is practical? And kind of trying to marry those two things together. So if there is an opportunity to go from thirteen or fifteen members down to nine, but still have the same kind of representation that we think is effective, then I think we can do those things. We just need to review those on a case-by-case basis. And there's tw- twenty?
Yeah, there's over
Over two hundred Over twenty boards.
Most of them are five to seven. I mean, I think five to seven's a workable number and allows perhaps, and so they can still have a quorum, but anything more than seven, that's
We have a surprising number that are larger than seven and, and then when you total them all up, it, it's over two hundred slots to fill. And speaking of solid waste, you, you may recall a conversation we had not too long ago where we kind of had to do a reset on what their role was, and that, that is one of the things that was on the list that didn't get a lot of support from, from you as you filled out your surveys. But the struggle there was that they, they're supposed to be a regional advisory group and they seem to be focused on sanitation and city sanitation and landfill operations more so than kind of the broader encouraging reduction, recycling and reuse eh, on a regional basis.
And, and that is a unique, so that is, is kind of unique. Most, most landfills aren't owned by cities. I mean, there's only three or four in the state that are owned by cities. That is typically a county function. And then the smaller counties, they don't have enough people to manage, so they have consortiums of, they'll have ten or fifteen counties that are together that have a solid waste management plan that's all together. So ours is a little bit unique in that we're the city that owns the landfill in the county and the state law is kind of in the county and the state law is kind of written more towards how a county would manage that, if that makes sense.
And I don't think the intent is to be at a level of specificity by policy or ordinance that our committee gravitates to. It's supposed to be more open ended um, initiative. Make Saline County.
Yeah, it's just Saline County. Yeah.
Yeah. So um, and, and things seem to be functioning pretty well with, with that particular committee right now in terms of the role and, and I think staff's staffing that through pretty well, but it, it's been a point of confusion in the past. Transit guest tax. Um, so we, we raised the transient guest tax. We, I didn't bring the, the details today, but we've covered with you before kind of that allocation of portions of the transient guest tax to dedicated uh, recipients and programs, uh, including the convention and visitors bureau, the uh, cultural arts and regional marketing, um, marketing Kenwood Oakdale Park, supporting T-Pac. And then most recently, we did the, the rate increase with the intent of funding um, baseball turf improvements. Um, so it, it is performing well. Um, some of the conversation we've had recently is, is number one, is there remaining capacity to fund the additional request that we're getting for turf? And so that's the first thing we plan to do with it. Um, but the, the wording of the increase was open ended enough that it included athletic activities. Some of you individually have had conversations about um, wanting to fund other things with that transient guest tax. And um, I guess one question is, will your receptivity to kind of taking a deep dive into what's coming in and where it's going out? Or do we, you want to leave it untouched and just try to capitalize on the new revenue that might be available from the increase only?
Well, I think we should take a look at, I mean, it's, we're very fortunate that it's increasing. At this point, we're hoping that's going to continue, but life's pain comes from the margins. So uh, if it continues to increase, I'd like to know it's being used efficiently. And where the city commission wants to put it. And then if it shrinks, then that's another, another policy decision. But uh, I think it's a good time to review it when we're looking at better times. Those that have a fixed percentage that they receive in that, in the scenario of that funding, uh, that they might be getting paid more than they should. So uh, I think it's worth making a review of what each assignment of the revenue needs to have and make sure that the total's being used productively.
See some nodding heads. Is there consensus on that? Uh, to be honest, I can't recall who it was that approached me and, and nor what the, the topic was, but I was recently approached by someone thinking that they had another and possible use for transient guest tax revenue. Throw that out to the group. Okay.
Separate thing or maybe we have tennis maybe in that. One point in the last few months.
It was, yeah, tennis, right, for the, for the bathroom building renovation. I think you mentioned which is the reason I wanted earlier to change from baseball to athletic facilities.
Right.
So if, if we were flush enough, we, we'd have the luxury of considering other options.
Well, as, as I've reported to you individually, I think the, the bathrooms are going to be in, in our responsibility, given I want JRI's redirecting their focus of their contribution to operating expenses. So park staff is gonna need to get started in terms of uh, working up a revised budget and, and scope and, and uh, so we'll know more about costs in a little bit, but if there's any capacity there, that could help relieve that. Uh, demolition, I think we've talked through unless there's anything else the, that merits demolition or any questions you have on that.
We talked about uh, relocating media. Um, the, the suggestion of reorganizing and downsizing the, the development services department. Um, staff had some conversation following the, the city commission strategic uh, planning conversation and, and it kind of made note that from a size of department standpoint, it's not overly large. Um, it's, and many of those other departments have has many or more divisions within them. It's really kind of a function of department head and then having the division heads under them. So in, in development services, you've got planning and zoning, um, and you've got building codes, which those kind of have a natural uh, connection anyway, in terms of just coordinating within the department. Code enforcement has a natural connection to uh, building codes. And then community relations was the, the one division that um, used to be a department that was made a division. But I think, I, I don't want to speak for Lauren, but I, I don't think she has a, a sense that she's overwhelmed in terms of needing to divide the division up as much as we just need to have staff and, and get our goals and expectations to line up with staffing levels. Um, I don't think it's a, a load for her as the department head. In fact, there are some synergies there that are helpful in terms of many relations, um, being able to coordinate with building services and fair housing issues and code issues, that type of thing. So I guess that's a long way of saying that it really wasn't on staff's radar as something, but it came out in the conversation.
What's the current status as far as uh, openings?
Um, we have an interim building official and so that, that creates a vacancy in assistant when we fill the interim or the assistant position. We had a building inspector retire recently. We struggled to get planner, we had planners authorized and struggled to get them filled, but we have them filled recently. Um, Natalie, anything I'm missing?
So the department head doesn't feel like there's anything broken that needs to be fixed, then to me, it, it seems like we should just leave it alone.
I think that would be. And the retirements within the last three weeks, something like that. So I think staff's preference would be focus on staffing levels within the department rather than uh, and that's actually some of the additional line items below. Uh, code adoption, we feel a sense that the, that we're not necessarily on the most current code, but feel a need to stay current from a state fire marshal's office standpoint and trying to keep up with um, the, the codes that are in, in use widely by contractors that are working in different communities. Um, seemed like there was just some neutrality there, but wanted to touch on that. Trailers and front yards, um, I think from staff's perspective, we feel like that's more of a hot topic than you may as the governing body, but.
Are you talking about like campers or children's trips?
Yes, to both, but campers in particular.
They're equally off putting, in my opinion.
Boats.
Yeah, yeah. Um, RVs, um, we, as it currently sits, um, they, we have lawful locations of trailers, RVs in, in front yards.
How does that work if they're parked in the side yard?
Is it, I'd, I'd have to pull up the code, but there, it, it's especially problematic on corner lots where it technically is a side yard, but it feels like the front yard. But we make provision for if there's a all weather surface and a side yard or rear yard, I think it's permissible. And then we have some that feel like it's a front yard.
See a lot of complaints about?
Yeah, a lot of inquiries and, and neighbor complaints. Um, but at, at the moment, we'll you know, clarify whether they're code compliant. And we have people that are surprised that those that are code compliant are allowed to do that.
How does that work at a, it's like, send an email of a complaint about a property in a residential area. They had a couple pickups and trailers, but they're all, they're all on the street. I mean, you, it can only be on the street for so many days, I guess, at a time, correct?
Yeah, there, there, I want to say two weeks uh, and at a time for a, for a trailer, for a truck, as long as it's street legal. Um, it'll be assessed as to whether it's tagged and street legal and it can be parked there.
Doesn't it have to move every certain number of days?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's part of verifying that it's, you know, not abandoned or that it's street legal, but we make an initial assessment of.
Property is commercial property because they had a small business, they were parking trailers on the street and stuff, so.
Well, yeah, that, that's a, turns into a zoning issue, but yeah, um, they'd have to verify their commercial activity, but. So I, I think from staff's sense, the, it's just a point of frustration, a point of friction that they're feeling like we, they're motivated to address. I just wanted to verify, given your feedback that probably go forward with that. Um, the next two items relate to code enforcement. And I know dangerous structures in particular have been a, a focal point for you as the governing body. Um, we, Lauren talked to you when we, we met last about having adequate funding for dangerous structure abatement. I don't know that we've ever spent that, that line him down entirely, but I do think they try to manage to it and recognizing how much demolition can cost. Um, I, from my vantage point, it's enough of a priority for you as a governing body that we don't want that to be the hindrance. Um.
What is our dollar, annual dollar amount for a bait?
Uh, two hundred thousand, I think it's been. It doesn't, but you know, a lot of them, we start down that path, but they, they achieve voluntary compliance before all is said and done. Um, but yeah, if you, if we start talking about sizable structures, hotels and old hospitals, um, and that's probably a standalone conversation about that price tag. And there, there is a, a process to, you know, bill them, give them an opportunity to pay and place a lien on the property. Theoretically, we, we can get paid back over time. That assumes the property sells and generates enough revenue to, to offset the demolition expense, but um, we do at least get, get a lien on the property if it goes unpaid. Um, and then dedicated staffing, um, if need be, we can, we can go into greater detail, but I think the code staff that we have touches on dangerous structures, but between tall grass and weeds and, and junk cars and, and uh, nuisance properties and the process, the volume that goes with that, um, if we really wanted to be effective, some dedicated staffing would um, make a targeted effort there.
I'd like to see us move in that direction. I mean, if we think about infill, redevelopment, maintaining property values, just structures that won't fall down. Code enforcement unfortunately is one of those ways to get the ball rolling. And it, you know, makes it, you know, more attractive for someone to consider buying a house in a particular block. The other properties are being maintained.
It's getting the authority to cite some of those unsightly things, which is the, the code review we talked about. And then it's having the, the resources dedicated to make it a priority. Uh, if there's no objection, we'll, I think we'll try to build some of that into the upcoming budget. Um, ADA transition plan, I think that was probably, I don't know how well we explained that to begin with, but at the point ADA uh, was first implemented, we had an obligation to do a community assessment of, of our own properties and facilities, not necessarily private uh, properties or businesses. And we did that in two thousand and nine, I believe, and we've worked towards that, but we have an obligation and subject to audit by the Department of Justice to have transition plan and, and show demonstrable progress towards that. So Michelle Martin in community relations has reviewed that, both the code that, and the requirement that goes with it, as well as the transition plan is coordinated with parks and, and building services in particular and is, is updating that. I've looked at it in detail. I don't think there's anything overly challenging or overly significant. It's really the task of, of conducting the inventory and then following through on the remaining items. It's everything from counter heights to uh, heights of grab bars, um, just odds and ends throughout our facilities. So and not necessarily a, a point of complaint, but it's just an obligation that we need to continue to carry through on. Uh, we talked about the ESG um, grant um, process, homeless response uh, assessment. And that whole conversation, um, so community, the reducing responsibilities for topics covered by the state or federal government, that's specifically directed at community relations. Um, that could be fair, employment law as well, as well as fair housing. There's, generally, there's other providers that even, some, some cases are beyond us in terms of the, the significance and the resources. I think uh, the example we shared that, you know, national employers like Walmart or otherwise, um, have more resources than we might have. So there's that, but then there's also just, there's a state HUD that could handle housing complaints versus us. Um, but that is, that's a topic that's, as far as I know, has never really been discussed at the governing body level of pulling back on that level of service. I think we could redirect our efforts. Um, and, and be more efficient, but it could be seen as a service reduction for the community.
What does that ESG stand for again?
Emergency shelter grants. So it's trying to address um, uh, homelessness, um, oh, at risk, people with housing at risk, um, domestic violence, shelters, that type of thing. It's really, it's a pass through of state grant funds. We facilitate, we facilitate the process of receiving applications, submit them to the state, the state generally awards in some proportion less than applied for. And then we administer them in terms of the record keeping and we do get a, a small administration fee to cover our costs. So I'm not hearing vehement objection to revisiting the uh, role of community relations.
Well, because what, what was there, or is there a problem with the status quo?
I think it's uh, work, well, two things, workload in terms of the, the cases that, that are larger than we might be able to take on. And then just, we could use that staff more efficiently for other tasks since there's an alternative to.
Yeah. So the concern is really not the housing. Housing stuff, I think we feel like we can handle that. It's really the more, the employment cases. So, so when somebody comes with an employment case against Walmart and we have to try and defend that, that's pretty big. I mean, it's bigger than our capability. So.
That, that's one concern, but the housing, if we had a resource to refer them on, they, they could utilize the state agency rather than the city. We're one of the few in the state to do it.
Certainly true. I, I think their immediate concern is the employment stuff. While I, I mean, in a review, we could look at the whole thing.
We have two individuals in that department. Is that correct?
Three.
Three. And we would, if we turned over their certain responsibilities to state, that we would keep the three employees.
That's a great question.
Actually, that would be a good.
Are we one of, are we all, one of only two communities in the, in the state that has that department?
Yeah, I think it's only two. And I believe it's us and maybe Lawrence.
Isn't one of their salaries?
Well, yes, so, so there is some HUD funds that come, that come and support some of the salaries. I don't, I can't.
But it's strictly limited to HUD specific activities. It does not generate revenue.
So I think it's like.
Purposes.
I mean, I think it's like forty or forty or sixty, or between forty and sixty percent of uh, of one or two of the salaries that's covered by HUD federal funds. But I can't, I don't know that exactly off the top of my head, so.
What's the role in that department? Um, seems like it'd be a good segue for that liaison between Salina Grace and regarding the homeless issue.
Mm-hmm.
And we can allocate that time that we're, we're saving towards that.
Yeah, I think, I think the, that was part of the discussion and I think that's certainly the case. They could, they can provide community support in other ways. Um, whether it.
It seemed like some of that HUD money was related to this thing, a certain number of cases a year of a certain type. I can't remember the type.
Requirement. And there, those are housing. I mean, the housing stuff, it's, it's very, it's very connected specifically to housing. And that's actually why and part of the reason we can't fund more of their position is because we do the employment and we do those other things. So um, yeah, the HUD money is strictly housing, fair, fair housing, all of that.
And I, I guess one other ancillary thing is, is it's very. But and I guess one other ancillary thing is, is it's very training intensive or it's supposed to be very training intensive and HUD doesn't do a good job of providing the required training. So we we struggle a little bit just in terms of meeting their expectations and their requirements. But um, i- if if you're willing to have the conversation, we could task the staff with kind of reporting out in greater detail, um, what they currently do and what an alternate approach might look like.
In particular, you know, how easy it would be for folks to access the state or federal.
Yeah, if we aren't available, what what their alternatives are. Okay. Um, sign code updates for murals. Um, that that's a staff priority just because it is a point of friction. Um, the the right to life um, signage and called it into question and and it really just kind of identified a an area we had not fully covered in our codes. Um, I think the general expectation is murals are different than signs and it's a little bit of, well, I know a mural when I see it, but then we have others that don't want to go through the sign code, that want to classify themselves as a mural. And by definition, we aren't very well positioned to make that distinction right now. And then you add to that, gets a little bit more complicated with some federal case law, but uh, our current approach has has been, if it has lettering, it's a sign, not a mural, but you end up with plenty of just artistic drawings that are going to have a lettering with no intention of being an advertising sign. So it's, from staff's perspective, it's self preservation. We just got to get those ones straightened out to get it behind us.
Implementing that, but uh, I think murals have to have an approval process.
No, we're trying, we're trying to facilitate murals without having that that exception be so broad that other signage tries to get caught up, get the same exception as a mural. So we're trying to refine our definition of a mural and then uh, allow exceptions for murals.
So is there case law already in place pertaining to this issue? Because, and I'm not trying to get too far into the weeds, but to me, and it's not my forte, but art seems very subjective.
There is. Staff staff's researched that some. In fact, they found some really good language that that I got attached to. And as soon as I did, they informed me, well, that'd been overturned in the Ninth District uh, court. And so eh, what we're dealing with is being is an issue on the national level in terms of, I think it it was a phone company, I forget which one, contorting the definition of a mural such that they could do their commercial advertising. So for us to address this, we really need to kind of do a survey of what's out there and find something that has stood up in terms of case law and adopt it.
See, and I figured it's as simple as, is it obscene or not obscene? And then that would be, so it's it's far more.
Yeah, and and it, you know, part of it, from the sign code perspective, there's a limit on the number, there's a limit on the size. And so, you know, eh, someone may be motivated to turn their entire side of their building into a commercial advertisement by contorting it to be a mural because a mural gets an exception. And some of the case law is a coffee, a steaming cup of coffee on the side of a coffee shop has no wording to it, but is that a commercial sign or not? I'd rather not have to get to that level of detail, but that's where the case laws add on it. Um, but we found ourselves right in the throes of it as we were dealing with signage and Boom Salina was coming forward with all their murals and and we didn't have a clear path uh, forward on that. So.
This this stem from the left objecting to the right to life sign mural?
Uh, yeah, part of it was administering what's a sign and what's not a sign. And as soon as we did that, then it was, well, if I'm a sign and they're a mural, how come I'm not a mural or they're not a sign? It's just the whole.
Something to object about any mural.
Welcome to public service.
And I think the point though is.
Yeah.
Even though the catalyst was that particular, at this community, that particular deal, it would have come up eventually in some other form.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty safe assumption.
We we see it all the time in code enforcement. As soon as we enforce the code and, you know, I'll go so far as to say, solidly within the intent of the code, the person that is being enforced on wants to offer up examples that test that and take it to the extreme. And we're we're stuck. It it has to be uniform. And this particular language, um, really wasn't even written with this question in mind. We've just got to get it cleaned up.
With Boom and our artwork alley, uh, that we faced, it really didn't have anything to do with left, right, and political messaging. It was that once words uh, are utilized uh, to communicate a message, it changes the Supreme Court's status on interpretation of that space. So we had been advising artists, they couldn't include words on their murals. Well, that leaves out an entire field of of uh, street art where the decorated word isn't about the message, but about the decoration of the word. But it prevents us from opening up to that without a lot of special legislation or or review by you or or by uh, multiple boards, uh, design review board if it's downtown and so on. So so having Lawrence's team and city staff be able to review that would help us provide clear guidelines to Boom and to other partners in the community that want to create murals that aren't in conflict with uh, becoming a sign. So.
So graffiti art, I'm guessing, was probably one of the sticking points.
Well, the hypothetical I threw out is if you have a picture of a farm field being plowed with a tractor and the tractor says John Deere on it, those are words. That wasn't intended to be a commercial message, but if our standard is if it contains words, eh, that just isn't very effective. So um, we don't don't have an immediate solution other than it is a whole set of case law out there that we just need to sort out. But we are being watched.
Complicated.
Yep. Um, so. I not necessarily a pri- I I would suggest it's a priority for you in that if we can solve this, it's it's a problem that doesn't end up in your lap. Um, and we just, it's something that's on it. It's not, not a simple straightforward solution, but it's on our staff punch list is needing to be addressed. Um, city acceptance of detention ponds, um, we covered that when we met last, but currently, uh, if a development, a developer will pay the equivalent of ten years maintenance costs on a detention pond, our policy is that we'll accept that. And uh, that's eh, if you are making an informed decision that that's okay, uh, that's fine. We just, um, from a staff maintenance and expense standpoint, it's an opportunity to to pull that. The Public Works Department. Right, yeah. Uh, yeah, if um, eh, the alternative would be that the development would have to have a homeowners association and be commonly held by the homeowners association. They'd pay dues and they'd maintain it.
I know there's a point in in the discussion here about homeowners associations, but that might come back to bite you, knowing how effective some homers.
Eh, well, yeah, I think I've been told that Salina's history is that homeowners associations haven't been effective. So we've just gravitated to assuming that they they won't be used and and the city taking on added responsibility.
And if we had to force a homeowners association to act, uh, what, there's legal process, there's, there's, what all happens then?
They, if they set their covenants up correctly and they fail to act, then we could act and and bill them and and be in a position to put a lien on them. That would be cumbersome and and um, confrontational, but there could be a fallback position if need be.
We don't have any control set up for that.
Now, the premise would be they're supposed to standalone function effectively on their own and just us reserve some ongoing responsibility if they fail to do so, that we can pursue. I think ponds are probably the biggest issue by far. They get into landscaped areas and and median islands and decorations in median islands are another one that's been a point of confusion about whose responsibility it is. But if, as a, as a governing body, if that's either, you know, something that seems problematic or not something that's a priority, that's fine. I just wanted to touch on it, given the way the responses fell. Okay, the social justice survey, a little bit too soon to say. Um, I think we, I've heard that we might have have results next month. Um, so we'll definitely receive those results and then we'll just have to go from there. But um, and then reviewing downtown parking effectiveness and efficiency, we've been on again, off again in terms of enforcement and and staff resources to do that. The thinking was possibly coordinating with SDI and and trying a uh, moratorium and sizing up um, how problematic it actually is, whether we, if we didn't have parking, downtown parking enforcement, or if we took a different approach, is it is problematic as they might imagine? But.
It's the biggest problem, shop owner or property owners, home people parking?
That's the anecdote I hear. I I can't say that with certain deep. Yeah, I'm I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure how they track it and enforce it. I mean, they could certainly try to, you know, stress the point with business owners, but I I don't think it, I think it's a point the business owner is already aware of. They're just choosing to do what they want to do. But um, I guess the reason it it occurred to to me and staff is with COVID and with our staffing challenges, there have been periods where we've not uh, had an emphasis on downtown parking and we haven't heard that it's been problematic. So it may be, it may be a service that we're just providing out of habit and out of uh, tradition that could merit some consideration.
There have been a few conversations about parking in SDI's meetings. And generally, it's one or two people that are the habitual, they park in the wrong spot every day and they just are paying their five dollar fine and they don't really care. So that conversation has been, could we have more of a, if we're going to do it, could we have a scale where, you know, you get after three tickets, it starts to get more expensive, so it's not just paying for parking. Um, but we haven't had a, they haven't, that's not been an issue that's been raised probably in a year. I mean, they just haven't said.
Advice for the parking sticker for downtown, those that live in.
The loft apartments and SDI administers that during giving them out.
They have to park in certain parking.
Right. And and it's in the rear generally. I mean, they can't park on Santa Fe.
And in the back of those lots too, correct?
I don't think, I don't know, maybe it's shop owners, we have some problem, but I go to work fairly early in the morning and there's very few cars parked on Santa Fe when you go, which is a good sign. You know, it it used to be, we had a lot of problems with on-street parking when we had Brown Mackey downtown. That's been years ago. This this was the last time I remember us having a significant problem.
Well, and KU Med School has dedicated parking in the back. I I've not heard it being a problem. Um.
What are the regulations for park? I have no idea.
Uh, yeah, there's just posted areas that have time limits that require, and it's different. Some, some of it's eight-hour parking, some of it's, I think, three-hour parking.
Yeah, the, I think Santa Fe is the shortest and then in the back, uh, there's areas closer with a shorter timeframe and then long-term parking in the back, kind of away from the buildings.
Areas does she focus on?
Uh, presumably all of the above, Santa Fe in particular, but she has, they have the authority to enforce the longer-term parking as well.
Well, on the positive side, this is a symptom of prosperity.
It is. Um, you know, part of the message we get is you're discouraging, you know, downtown shopping and and for that out-of-town person that stayed too long and got a ticket, it's not the message you want to send, but from SDI's standpoint, they don't want it abused either. So the thinking is, eh, try to size up, re-assess the problem and see if we still need parking enforcement as we're currently employing it.
Actually, that comment sparked a memory, uh, when I was in college in Topeka. And I had occasion to, my internship was in downtown, and because I had a Saline County tag, I had a tendency to get a warning, uh, welcome to Topeka, we're glad you're enjoying our city. Um, you parked wrong, but here's the little paper warning. And I, it was kind of like a first time or second time, uh, freebie. And maybe that's something worth looking at for people who are here patronizing our businesses.
Okay, I, if you're not opposed, I I think it's a conversation worth having. I think it'll be a delicate conversation and it could, you know, spark some some animated responses, but uh.
I think if a person owned their own business, they're motivated to park in the back.
It would be.
Their car out front doesn't bring them any money in the door they didn't walk in with. And it's on them to get their employees to park in the back. But, you know, three hours, you could, this is free parking. Any other city bigger than us, not only are you going to have less than three hours to park, but you're going to be paying for it. You know, we're not charging a dime to park down there. It's just, be considered, don't park here all day. Which, and if you need to park here all day, park in the back. I don't think it's owners, but if if it's employees parking, we, that's it, SDI needs to, you know, have a session with its members and and have a heart-to-heart talk with employees. Uh, this is not the way we make money.
And my sense of the conversation that they had was not that this was a habitual problem with a lot of people up and down Santa Fe. It was, we got one or two people that have just decided that it's, they'll, they'll pay the five bucks a day and they're going to park there all day long and it doesn't matter. I mean, that's, that's.
One of those people has moved out of the area.
Yeah, and I have not heard that. I mean, it's, it's probably been a year since we've had that.
But I have to admit, when, when I hear that description of the problem, I immediately say, do we need a staff person committed to addressing that problem? Yeah, um. So if there, eh, you know, you're kind of mixed between yes and and neutral. And just wanted to bring that up, that we'll we'll probably try to pursue that unless there's objection and we're warning you a little bit that that could spark some, some conversation. Yeah. You can, you can use Venmo to pay what? Yeah, it was one. And then we, we buy a vehicle and equipment to do it. Um, community center maintenance and renovation, just confirming that the intent there was uh, Friendship Center and Carver Center and they're aging and and, you know, we can maintain them kind of as is, or we could try to make upgrades. But what I'm seeing is not a lot of uh, emphasis on that, just uh, maintain them um, as is, I guess. The crematorium is a ongoing conversation about transitioning away from that. And it looks like there's some, I'm sorry? I suppose we could.
I don't know. Sat down and then slept. The larger ones, I would assume, could attack Manhattan or.
And we could.
Sell the device or? Sell a device. And contract out the service.
Well, we probably wouldn't.
People are figuring it out for themselves.
Yeah, we've, we backed away from cremation of, for, you know, owners and of their pets. It were down to cremation of animals.
Roadkill basically.
Yeah, or injured on the road or.
What do people do if they want their pets cremated?
They go to their vet. They, yep.
Their veterinary vet, and they have.
Yeah, there's a service provider that coordinates with the vets and provides that. So we're, we're down to eh, our disposal of animals um, could be at the landfill eh, under certain parameters. And. Yeah, and.
If you, that's probably the operator, if you don't know how to run one, that you couldn't really mess them up. So.
Could be.
Sell the thing, uh, contract that service out.
Eh, if if you're not uh, opposed to it, we'll, we'll pursue an alternative altogether and see if we can do without the crematorium. The animal shelter expansion, um, the only concern there is just volume eh, if eh, we find ourselves up against uh, capacity at times. And they do have. Uh, if we find ourselves up against uh capacity at times and they do have um sizable donation fund balance. I don't know if that changes your, your perception of that, if it's able to be paid for with donated funds. Right, yep. Yeah, I, I think there's an opportunity to. I'm sorry?
Try to process them to an ownership or?
Yeah, we, we, well, we have a large couple, it ebbs and flows, but we have a large volume of pit bulls that we end up holding for court cases and trying to find an alternate location for them. Uh, and then just the, the volume that we get um in terms of strays, picking them up, holding them until they're adopted. When you combine the pit bull, at, at times, the pit bulls have accounted for seventeen out of twenty-one or twenty-four spaces. Uh, and some of those pit bulls are there for an extended amount of time, so.
This is probably a loaded question, but I think it needs to be asked, if uh we were to abolish the BSL, would that get rid of the need for the expansion?
It would certainly uh.
I doubt it.
Create efficiencies in, in a number of ways.
Lots of places that have had, when they have gotten rid of the BSL, while they're not necessarily court holds, they still end up with a lot of pit bulls in their system because people adopt them more readily and then when they can't handle them, they end up taking them back. So I don't, I, it may reduce the number, but I don't think it will reduce, I, I don't know that it'll solve the problem altogether.
Yeah, I think two things that probably would be noticeable though is we're not gonna be holding pit bulls for months at a time.
Yeah.
Waiting on court and there is a lot of staff processing associated with pit bulls and you know, uh, impounding them and and the paperwork and dealing with the property owners and dealing with court and dealing with the attorney. Um, not complaining at all, that's, that's our community's policy and we're carrying it out, but.
Topeka Shelter had a free, free dog deal, so I, I looked on their site to see what they had and the large percentage of the dogs were pit bulls.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, that's, that's been across the country in places where they've gotten rid of the bans. Their, their, their shelters are, have a lot of pit bulls.
And our, our struggle is if we've identified it as a pit bull and we've identified a pit bull as a dangerous breed, then we, it's questionable adopting it, even if you're adopting it outside the city limit. So we're trying to find pit bull rescues, it'll take.
We don't, we don't adopt any pit bulls out. Those, if, if we have a pit bull that's been relinquished to us, we find a shelter for it somewhere else. So we try to find somebody who'll take it. And if they're, if they're aggressive, you know, we may not be able to find anybody that, that will, but we try to find rescues or, or other homes or other shelters that will handle those, those dogs.
So are a lot of the pit bulls in shelters, people that have them and they say, I can't handle this dog and bring him to dog pound?
That's the theory. I haven't seen any scientific, you know, factual uh confirmation of that.
I mean, as BSL has been repealed across the country, the numbers of pit bulls in shelters has increased.
Yeah, I was surprised to see that. Uh, the shelter has a lot of, enjoys a lot of donation. Do we have the money and donation to do expansion or building from?
Yeah, um, and one of the conversations that we actually had on my calendar and I had to push out was revisiting the donation balance and there's some segregated funds for cats and dogs and specified purposes, but it's, it's a sizable balance.
Putting those funds to work before inflation chooses. So if that's what the donors are designated for, both for building and uh staffing, what, what are the donations typically used for?
Uh.
Well, just recently, we expanded our surgery center. We spent several hundred thousand dollars to re redo that area and kind of expand our services or our capabilities to do spay and neuters. Um, and there's some storage facilities, I think we've built.
Yeah, we renovated the storage facilities, the dog park.
We get a lot of funds for rentals. So we're looking at donation, we've been looking at it for some time and we're, we think we've narrowed down to a plan, how we want to recognize donors, how we want to recognize people that want to memorialize their pets. So we have some plans, but there is, uh, there is some funds, I wouldn't say there's enough funds in the uh donated funds for a full addition, but we can certainly work on the design of such a facility.
So those funds aren't used to like buy dog food supplies?
For the, for the, for the care and wellbeing of the animal, uh, for spay and neuter, will we use free spay and neuters if we need to? But um, it's not to buy regular operational supplier.
Um, I think I mentioned earlier, but I was surprised that Play Day in the Park was split a little bit in terms of neutral and a no. Um, I should give this direction, otherwise we are going forward with reinstating Play Day in the Park for this year. The police department, we talked about the, the new justice center and, and a very rough estimate in the eighty millions. Uh, I think the, the question I have for you is confirming that our interest and that I can communicate to the county, our interest in the space that'll be vacated by the sheriff's apartment and the law enforcement center. So none of the, none of the jail cells, none of the um, um, older part of the jail. It's the, as you walk up, kind of in that L shape, the sheriff's office is on the south end and uh has some back offices there. Um, we, the, the company that did the design for the training facility, uh, police design group, I think, police facility design group, um, took a look at both that space and the current police department space. And their number's a little dated now, but I think they had about an eight million dollar price tag to renovate. And it might not hurt to give you a, a tour, while we're doing Memorial Hall, it might not hurt to give you a tour of the police department. It's, it's showing its age and, and it's a, a tight space. So I, I want, I do want to pause there because the county, uh, I've indicated just at the city manager level, um, I think we're interested in that space, but I think they're looking for a more firm answer and they might move on if uh, if we, if we delay too much further. So the, the thing that I've told the police department is we may just have to accept that space, make use of the space as it's currently configured and then factor renovation into a future capital improvement planning, but it feels to me like an opportunity that we don't want to let get past us. So I'm not seeing any objection, so I, I, I'm, I will reach out to the county administrator and tell them that we're interested.
And just speaking for myself, I think it'd be great to have a walkthrough of the space. It'll probably give us a little better perspective on the direction we should go.
Okay.
So I, my only recollection is walking through the old part of the jail to get the new, or the, the current part of the jail. My recollection's not kind.
Right, um, yeah, and we're trying to avoid the jail space itself and focus on the office spaces. But I, I think it'd be helpful for you to see the police, the city police department side of the building as well, so, okay? Uh, good questions. I, it, part of that would be um whether the site gets repurposed. Part of it is, we're gonna have to work with the county now that they're leaving to kind of demo part of that building or their demolition of that building and, and divorcing ourselves from some of their existing systems. I think police department was looking at it as just a, a reset of um, starting over from scratch in terms of their configuration and, and location and some assumption that the county may have another use for that site. But I'm not hearing that from the county. Uh, the, the space assessment could enter that into the conversation, but I think that price tag is just too big for them.
As for you, board, I would still like to see uh people that sit on that board. Be highly encouraged to do ride-alongs.
Yeah, and there, the ride-along item had, didn't make this list because it seemed like there was support for that, so. Um, we're stopping short of requiring that or requiring them to go to the academy, but we can continue to encourage them. I think we talked through the star bond items, um, the runway at um Berkeley Family Recreation Area. Um, my concern is that's a problem that's not gonna let us um ignore it too much longer. Um, so people continue to staff through um options and costs and be reporting that back to you and you're gonna end up having to make a decision in terms of uh what we want to do. It, it could be um discontinuation of, of those uses of it. It could be removal of the concrete um and, and not re-establishing the driving service. I don't know how practical that is for some of the events, or it could mean having to invest in, in fixing it up.
Are there any alternative uh locations?
I'm sorry?
Are there any alternative locations? Uh, the airport authority has an awful lot of unused runway and, but, you know, over the years, they've confined themselves to the south end there. Is there any large enough usable space that could be considered?
We can take another look. I know quite some time ago, we had conversations about whether there was runway space to um have the, host the drags. And I know the answer was no, I don't know if it was lack of space or just uh that's not something that they want to take on. Yeah, there, there's a whole risk component to that as well, that we just kind of accepted as a community, I guess.
I guess somebody's went out there and walked the uh runway, obviously, because I noticed when I was out there along the edges, it's crumbling, but the mid, the mid sections, when I was on it, seemed to be okay, just on the driving standpoint.
The, we've had to make some repairs down the center where heat's caused sections to heave and, and recognizing that is the, you know, the drag lane, but then the turn lanes are spalling and crumbling. And so we asked staff to take a look and see whether they could be topped in some way and there was a concern that, that given its use, and the, um, oh, I keep drawing a blank on the name of the other. This, the sports car club, it doesn't go straight down the, the center. They lay out a slalom course on some of that, so. I don't know that either one of them has raised the issue. We're recognizing that it's becoming an issue. Uh, both in terms of just the crumbling, getting on the surface as you're trying to have drags and car races and we just don't think the concrete's gonna hold up much longer.
The numbers of the KKOA, I mean, they have to be substantial in terms of like transient guest tax and, I mean, that's, that's a shot in the arm. And I, personally, I'm a fan of SCCA racing, but um it seems like just based on KKOA, it'd be in our better interest to, to look at that, but I mean, it's, we've talked about a lot of different ways to spend money today, obviously.
I did reach out to the CVB and let them know that, that we've identified that concern and suggested they put their thinking caps on, see if um they could find some funding.
Well, according to, last time I heard their numbers, that is the single largest uh shot in the arm for our local economy as far as those types of events. Totally eclipses the River Fest.
Well, and those folks who participate in SCCA racing, disposable income, they're here, they're gonna spend money on restaurants and shopping, it's, it's guaranteed.
Well, what we'll do is continue to staff through the solution and the cost of the solution and we'll be coming back with that as a decision point for you.
Thank you. Drag race, that's one evening a year. And I think if you're gonna really put serious money toward it, uh, some of us will remember when we had drag races out there every week. You know, one of the stories of your service.
Yeah.
Uh, could bring that back.
Um, my comfort level's tested once a year, once a week, I don't, I don't know.
A lot of history there for drag racing.
I could tell some stories.
And then the other thing you have to consider, whenever those events are held, the dog park is closed.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, you'd have to.
That's why the second dog park.
Second dog park.
So I, I lost track of time. We, one forty-five was our disinformation segment. Who packed up on left?
Hmm? Uh, Brad Anderson.
All right.
He got mad one forty-five about.
Well, that's what I was wondering and.
Yeah, there wasn't, I looked around at one forty-five.
Thank you, I lost track of time. So the only other thing I have left is Park Master Plan and I wasn't planning on going line item by line item through that. Uh, I did provide you a copy of it. I know some of you took a look at it. Um, certainly want to throw it open to conversation. One item uh that's kind of rising to the top of the list in terms of what's remaining is Indian Rock Shelter. Um, and that's certainly something that would be good to have a conversation about.
You know, that by itself probably equals all the other projects and costs, but boy, yeah. If we can just get that done, I mean, that's a whole huge venue and, and facility that we can open up. I mean, it's just, and it's not gonna get better the longer we, we wait.
So it, in the interest of trying to frame the conversation a little bit, let, let's set aside what the ultimate uh improvement might be. Is, is that a venue that you, as a governing body, want to pursue um replacing or maintaining as a shelter destination type thing? It seems like either say it's, we're gonna take it out of circulation and it's not gonna be a venue anymore or we need to come up with something that we can live with and afford.
You have to tell me about the cost. Is there water and sewer up there or what do you know about the park?
No water, is there? And how often is it used? I guess, I don't even know what it's.
No water?
I, and, and I'll want to give Jeff an opportunity to speak, but my sense is that usage has dwindled as the condition of the facility has dwindled. But, you know, I, it used to be that it, it was in high demand, um, and it's limited.
I remember going to several events with our kids when we first moved here, and we moved here in ninety-nine. Uh, but as the condition has deteriorated, I mean, it's, it's a great place, at least it used to be, to go get your prom picture taken or pick, just because of the view, but the building, I don't, no, and, and the condition of that parking lot, unless you have a four-wheel vehicle way up off the ground, it's gonna be hard to navigate.
And we do, I mean, we have planned to do some upgrades with concrete at that area in that parking lot, but um I think that's the next phase or two um as far as doing something with the parking.
What do you call it?
Do we have any?
Just the part to the north that's overlooked?
So.
Do we have problems with vandalism up there? At one point, weren't we having trouble with vandalism?
Yeah, I think that's, so that, I think it start, when it started as a, as a pavilion and then we enclosed it and then there's bars on the windows now and all that and there, there has been vandalism. Um, I don't know if there's any, any recent.
We get a handful of vandalism, occasionally it's just graffiti, we paint it and we come back. The bars on the windows have uh lessons, the amount of times we've had them replaced windows. Uh, really the vandalism, which is, I wouldn't say it's frequent, but it's more often than some of our other facilities, but it's just uh restricted to graffiti.
If there were an open-air facility, would it, it get vandalized or, you know, treated the same as an enclosed?
All of our prefab shelter. What, a picture of a prefab shelter? Easy Google on.
And someone that, Nathan, Mayor asked, but I just assumed there was water and sewer up there, but I guess there isn't. Like, my memory wouldn't allow me to recall if I.
The number of rocks that hang over.
There's lots of trees and hills.
So what's the proposal, turning down, starting over?
Well, the Park Master Plan envisions a kind of a destination shelter, wedding venue uh facility at the top of the hill with an overlook, you know, in both directions essentially. Um, so it's pretty elaborate. Um, I think as an alternative, and I just put Jacob on the spot, but there, there are prefab laminated timber shelter houses that you, you could purchase and put up there. It would be open air, it wouldn't necessarily be, have a kitchen and, and all those amenities to it. Or it, it could be, I was thinking something a little.
I know, I couldn't find anything, but something. But something, the idea of, I mean, what we have in Bill Burke Park or what we have in Jerry Ivy Park, a, a shelter house that's not an open air, I mean, and you can get different levels.
So there's another plan to have some kind of a sale facility at Indian Rock down where the existing bathrooms are to the north side, kind of facing the lake. What I'm recalling, remembering is a restroom facility there and then you can walk down, walk around trail around the lake. Wouldn't that be a better investment to have something in that area that's protective and?
I mean, we.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Park has had a conversation about having, kind of having that place be the, kind of the premier location that you go to at, at the park and moving the park structure from, from Gleneford Hills across the street. So you have a bigger kind of destination playground. And then that would be in conjunction with the pavilion and restroom and whatever's already there. I mean, we've had conversations about that. That's not necessarily in the Park's master plan.
It's in the playground.
And, and I think part of the appeal of the, the Indian Rock location is being at the top of the hill, one of the highest points in town. The overlook, yeah.
As far as the.
It's in town.
So we're working our way through the Park Master Plan. You know, I don't see us doing this in 2023 necessarily, but we could start the investigation of what type of, what the development plan might look like. But if there's consensus that we want to strike it from the Park Master, if we want to head in another direction, I think it would need to be clear to that site.
Well, even if the, the building was removed and you just keep it as a scenic overlook, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done on the road and the parking lot and just.
Yeah, there you go. That's, that's a little bit more than I was thinking, but.
Yes.
$25,000.
Where is that? That's just anywhere.
It's a prefab.
Prefab, yes.
Yeah, really, you better order it before the, the price goes up. But, but that is somewhat representative of maybe a compromise from a full blown structure.
Are there other, if you're going to ask us to review that are big or just discovery centered?
Well, Jacob, if we'll go back to the other one. So this is what we've deemed as remaining items in priority order. So, and that, that priority rating is one through 187 with subpoints. So as you can see, Indian Rock is number five. But you've got Indian Rock Overlook Picnic Area, replacing Indian Rock Shelter with modern shelter bathrooms and kitchen. The others are, I wouldn't say are big ticket items. You got Lakewood Display upgrades, trees for shade, lighting in Pacific Park. So if we, if we can get Jerry Ivy Pond behind us, my sense is that Indian Rock's the next big ticket item on the, on the list.
Barring competition from another park facility, I'd, I'd like to keep that overlook in the plan. And I think it's sort of a forgotten park for a lot of people and could be so much better used than it is. It's a great place. For me, Indian Rock, you just, when we were kids. I spent a lot of time there. That was, that was huge. You could jump off those upper rocks into the lake. It seems like it's wrong. My mother, made it drive my mother crazy, but.
I'm not, I'm not hearing direction to take it off the list. I'm hearing some price sensitivity. Yeah, so, so is the, is the vision, I mean, I guess the Park's Master Plan vision was like a four or $5 million big building that was a wedding venue facility. I mean, it was a really big, kind of more in line with what we're now talking about at Oakdale for the, for the festival.
I see that as just the wilderness aspect of the park. Shave off the top of the place, they have adequate parking to get the.
Well, there's actually on the other side of the road, there's a flat area that I think could be turned into parking on the east side. So.
I think.
It's like whatever goes, there needs to be open air.
It'd be less expensive and the public would better receive it if there was more to do than just go to the outlet.
So something open air though.
To me.
That would be my inclination. Capitalize on the view.
We can start down that path of staffing.
Spent, like my daughter cut her foot in there, a piece of the ass, and we had to go get stitches.
Unless you have particular Park Master Plan items, that, that's all I had. We, I think we do have some people here for public comment, but want to, don't want to move off of Park Master Plan too quickly. I know some of you had some notes in, in the margins.
Was there a section that was?
Yeah. No, we can. Those were, sure, sure, go ahead.
Public comment, somebody, okay, well.
Yeah, if you want, mic runs over here, we can make it available. This one's for the camera, this one's for the room.
Please, please state your name and where you're from.
All right. Trel Grinter from OCCK Transportation. I am the director there and definitely a little bit different from Heart Conversation, but still in line with access, getting people to things that they want to do and things that they need to do. As you go through all of these conversations, please keep in mind access in the forefront of your brains. Public transportation is a true piece of keeping a strong diverse economy here in Salina. And our ridership continues to increase. So access to parks, access to nutrition and medical needs are only going to continue to increase. So I just wanted to come in and really make sure that I got in front of you and made sure that public transportation is a part of the conversation and truly access and reasonable access to everyone is, is very, very important in Salina. So thank you very much.
Any?
Sorry.
Oh, no. Any, any, any questions for?
Are, are there any major gaps that you found with current operations?
Sure. So I would love to see the opportunity to expand our routes. The hour loop tends to hold some people back looking at a 30 minute loop or a 45 minute loop or more frequent buses on each route would be amazing in the future. Obviously not something we can do right now without working very closely together. But then also sidewalks and how well are the sidewalks put in? Are they truly accessible to people walking with mobility devices? Do they connect each of our stops? And then do we have benches and shelters at stops that are appropriate? And areas that we can put our lifts and ramps down? So really making sure that, yes, we have a stop, yes, it's in the area, but can people actually get to the stop? Can people actually access the bus? Or is that stop in a muddy area? Is that stop in, if we would move it 20 feet to the north, it would be much more accessible to somebody. So looking, looking at those complete streets, and Michelle is going to talk a little bit more about that as well.
You have a list of stops that are available for adoption. I know some companies have.
Yes.
Sponsored a stop.
Yep, yep. A lot of people have sponsored a stop, whether they helped us put in the concrete pad or donated a bench. I've got a list of City Go stops that need some love, whether that be some repaint on the bench or just a total update in general. I do have that list. So if anybody is interested, and I did get some grant funding from KDOT and those, those benches are, and stops are on our list for improvement as well.
The city has a sidewalk gap plan. Do you have inventory of those gaps you mentioned as well that make sure that?
I haven't quite gotten it that far. So internally I have our stop assessment. So is the concrete pad wide enough? Is the bench in the right place? If I lower the lift on the bus, is it going to come down on the bench and in the grass? So then when somebody wheels off of that lift, they're going into the grass instead of the concrete. So I have that for our stops. We haven't taken it to that next step to talk about outside of that kind of 10 by 20 space, what does it look like on that next step? But that's somewhere that we're going to be going this year since we have the stops addressed going into that completeness. So as we build that, I would love to share that.
So we're sharing the microphone, so I'm going to steal it for a second. As, as, as part of the sidewalk gap inventory, our public works department has inventoried the entire community and then created a scoring matrix with access to bus connections being a high priority. So before you go out and do all that, you might want to coordinate with our public works director. He can show you what we've got and what the priorities lie right now. So we were committing $200,000 a year to sidewalk gap.
Thank you. That's amazing. Thank you for committing to that. That's amazing. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, so I'm Michelle Griffin. I am Mobility Manager for North Central Kansas. So I work with OCCK Transportation. I work with the other seven public transportation providers in North Central Kansas, as well as across the state with the other five mobility managers. So I'm going to build off of what Trel talked about. I'm going to talk a little bit more about mobility as a whole and what that means. So I borrowed a little bit of some information from Lawrence's Plan 2040. Talks about their strategic plan and what they're doing. So they look at the entire community and they want to make their community vision a reality. And so that's my question is what is the legacy that we want to provide for children and young people in our community and moving forward? So when we think about mobility here in Salina, we know that we're a regional hub and we bring in thousands of people to our community annually. We know that we have a strong public transportation system and let's continue that work in a truly multimodal system that is complete, safe and efficient for everyone, all ages and all abilities. So we must provide access and choices for all residents. People who cannot or prefer not to drive should have the same equal access. So we should continue to prioritize transit and then also bike away and pedestrian details in site planning and adhering to complete streets policies like Trel mentioned. So it's great that we're doing work on sidewalks. I would like to see us encourage less car centered approaches and encourage more evenly distributed amenities across our communities, focus on improving sidewalks and then continuing and increasing bike lanes. And in my opinion, our bike lane symbols that are painted on our streets are a great visual representation to not only our citizens, but visitors that we are bike friendly and family friendly. And that's a great thing to have. How great would it be to have walkable and bikeable neighborhoods all across our city with access to groceries, restaurants, recreation and entertainment? I would love to be able to walk down to the local corner restaurant. Instead, I have to get in my car and drive several miles to do that. So how can we take that and build that into what we're building Salina for the future? And one thing that I learned this week that I thought was interesting, because of our art centered focus here in Salina, school districts are able to have more applicants for arts centered arts and music teaching positions because people know about our arts centered values and they want to move here. So how can we build upon that for all of the other areas of our community, including mobility? So that's all in that. I'm going to switch gears a little bit to another topic that is separate but related. And I'm going to talk about food access and food system development. And so we have a, a group here that's working around food access and food system development. It's called the Saline County Food Action Community Team or FAC. And so we're just a group of people that have come together in the last couple of months to talk about food and what that means for people. So I want to share some information that I've gotten from the food bank. They're one of the partners of this team. And so we know that Salina has a food insecurity problem. In 2020, Salina had an estimated 11.3% population that was food insecure and that number went up to 16.5% for kids. That was 2020 numbers. The food bank in the past year has seen a 67% increase in the number of people that they are serving on a weekly basis. That's a huge jump and that is consistent with numbers that are seen all across the country. And we know that times are continuing to get harder for people. Food's more expensive, gas is more expensive, and those numbers are continued, going to continue to rise. So what can we do to help that? So we know that food has not traditionally been a part of a city comprehensive plan. We feel that it's becoming necessary in Salina. Another statistic is that over 90% of our food comes from other states, which is incredible, we think, based on our agricultural environment. There's also a movement starting with the Community Resilience Hub at Kansas Wesleyan. So if you haven't heard of that, you should check it out. They have this fantastic little graphic that talks about three different areas that they are working on for action, advocacy and education around a variety of things, including food and our food system. And so that's great for you to check out. A food system not only is restaurants and grocery stores, but also includes how we produce, buy, eat and dispose of food. So there's a lot more to a food system than just going to the grocery store. It's much bigger than that. And how can we move forward as a team, City of Salina, the Food Action Team and regional partners to, to better access and our food system? That's all, yeah.
Okay.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Are the bicycles being used?
Yes.
Have data on that, that they are.
Do have data at the office. I do send out monthly reports, so Mike gets.
I share them on occasion. I may miss them month or two, but.
Right.
And this morning we had a lengthy discussion about Seventh Street bathrooms. Our, I've heard complaints, severe people, drivers and such with issues on Seventh Street stock. Can you elaborate?
They would love better bathrooms. We have a unique partnership where we can.
I'm talking about the situation down there.
I assumed you were, yeah. We have a key so we can unlock them in the morning. So we have access to the restrooms. Then it's sometimes uncomfortable to go in. You have to get your bus on that route and have somebody blocking the restroom. But it's warm, it's comfortable in there. I don't blame people for being inside of the restroom to get out of the weather. But for our drivers, having, having a facility that they can easily access is very, very important. But there are oftentimes people that hang out in those bathrooms that can create a barrier for the driver to get in and get out quickly and get back on the route. Did that address at all the thing that you were talking about?
Well, what I was leaning toward was more just the population down there.
Yes.
Causing problems.
Sure, sure. So our drivers have been trained to say, hey, I got to get in here real quick. Most of the time, people will move on. They will get out of the way. So the driver, they have that respect. Occasionally it does pop up a little bit that they're like, I'm, I'm not moving over here. And that does make it a little bit uncomfortable for the drivers, but we have trained around that. We definitely need a bathroom solution. And I don't know how to find that solution because our drivers use that bathroom frequently. The population that hangs out at Seventh and Walnut sometimes uses the bus, but not always. And my team has been trained to address situations if they're heckling a, another passenger or causing issues with a driver, they address that behavior. And if it becomes too far, then they're instructed to call the police. If they're just hanging, we try to leave them alone as much as possible. But if we want to work on a creative solution together, I would be, I would be in for that. Because it definitely, more than just our drivers, it definitely is, is an issue that people notice. Sometimes, some days it's worse than others. Some days it's just fine and everybody leaves everybody alone.
You can go back and review the tables.
Sure. Yeah. And then we can, we can have a further discussion about that too, and how, how we can be a, a partner in a solution, for sure.
Is that your driver's main place or are there other spots on the route that are available to them?
We are at.
They all pass through that Walnut.
Yep. We're at Seventh and Walnut every top of the hour and every half of an hour, all five of our buses and occasionally six with the Blue Peak that runs.
So it is frequent that we are there and interacting with all different types of public transit users and just anyone in the area. So we are there a lot, a lot, a lot.
So how long do your driver have from the time they pull up, use the restroom and need to get back on the road?
Five minutes or less. Five minutes or less to count passengers going off, count passengers coming on, use the restroom if necessary, take a stretch break. We encourage stretching at Seventh and Walnut as well. So we'd love to streamline it a little bit more, but that five minutes goes by very, very quickly. There are other places. So the Blue Bus, for example, goes right by the OCCK Transportation Hub. They can hop out there, use the restroom, do their stretches there. We have time stops. Ninth and Hamilton is another one. Walmart, we're there at the top in half an hours as well. We have used their restrooms before too. So there are other places. It's not just there, but that's one spot where every single bus touches every single hour.
Thank you, ladies. Great to be in here. I know we were looking to be done it too, and I know Commissioner Davis has some appointments. Do we have, can we finish up? Do we have much left to do, Mike?
I'm, I'm done.
No, you're just starving.
Well, I really wasn't intending to go into the Park Master Plan in detail unless you had anything you wanted to cover.
I don't believe so. I think there's a lot of homework, a lot of work to be done, so.
Yeah, I guess in answer to Commissioner Ryan's question, the category that we identified for review was just staff having gone through those and, and saying, we, we need to review it as an example, replace all plumbing. Well, we could be more specific than all plumbing. And then some of the other elements, whether it was a found, a concern about a foundation, let's check out the foundation. Some of them are recommendations that, that we think might merit reconsideration, whether we actually want to go forward with them. So kind of set them off to the side for further review.
What's the running total, if we were going to write one check, we're clear off the Park Master?
I don't know that we've run that total. When the Park Master Plan came out, they said $6 million, but nobody could show me the math. And that's, with inflation, that number's not accurate anymore either. So I, I do think, you know, the, the big ticket item remaining is Indian Rock Shelter by far. But then there, well, just the concrete alone, we've broken into three phases to try to manage the scope and the cost of that. So we do have $500,000 a year. We're setting that, we're either using it for that purpose or, or setting it aside in reserve to, to fund it. All right. I appreciate your patience. This is. Thank you.